Okay, City Clerk, could you take the role please?
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Revel. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wen. We have a quorum.
Excellent. Well, thank you and welcome everybody to the Tuesday. We don't usually have a meeting on Tuesday, the Tuesday, May 28th, 2019 Evanston City Council Meeting. We've got a few announcements at the beginning under the Mayor's announcements. First off, I want to thank everybody that came out yesterday for the Memorial Day Ceremony at the brand-new Fountain Square. We had a great turnout. It was my third as Mayor and the crowd was larger than ever. It's important for us all to remember that the freedoms that we have, what we're going to be able to get to do today in terms of coming out for public comment, the elected, you know, representatives that we have up here at the dais are all because of people fighting for those freedoms and the liberties that we have. And some have made the ultimate sacrifice. So, thank you to the American Legion, thank you to SNL, and thank you to other organizations that put that together into our City Facilities Department who is there. The first announcement that I have is, how many people out there knew that this week is National CPR and Automatic External Defibrillator Week? Hmm? Good! All right. And I hope everybody in our fire department knew that. Okay? That is there. You know, if you haven't taken a CPR course in a while, I strongly recommend you to do that. It's changed a lot, particularly when I was younger and the way we do it now. So, what I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce and have Chief Brian Scott come up here and talk about that. And then, when you finish that, then Chief, if you'll hand it back to me with the other announcement related to this that I want to make, and then I'll have you do your thing. Thank you. Welcome.
Absolutely. Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, City Clerk Reed, Deputy City Manager Richardson, good evening, Fire Chief Brian Scott. And every year, and actually, the week we're going to designate for National CPR and AED is going to be June 1st and 7th. So, we're a little bit ahead, but this is perfect timing with respect to the council's schedule to kind of bring forward the importance of CPR and the ability to have AEDs throughout the city. This year's campaign reinforces the importance of CPR skills, and I just wanted to share a few facts about CPR and AEDs that you'll find very important to all of us. First, the fact is, is that if you know effective CPR, that you can increase the survivability of someone having a full cardiac arrest by three times. So, that's an important fact. The second fact is less than 20% of the American population knows CPR, and I'm talking about 20% of adults in the United States. That's a number that we're trying to change, and of course, I've talked to you before from the dais about our own community CPR program, and we're going to continue that program and train as many people as possible. But one particular fact I didn't know, and I wanted to bring this forward to you this evening, was the fact that 70% of out-of-hospital cardiac arrests occur in our homes. So, the fact is, is that CPR, the need for that is probably going to affect someone that you know and love, that it's going to be someone that you very much care for, a parent, a spouse, or even a child. So, that last important fact, the life that you say may be someone that you know and love, leads me to a very, very special story. And so, Mr. Mayor, I would like to bring up with your permission Ms. Sarah Agnew and her father Nick to come up to the dais, and I will hand it over to you.
Well, welcome, Sarah, and welcome, 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 Nick. You know, the chief made reference to how few people know CPR, right? 20% was the figure. Way, way too low. And can you imagine if that were 50% or 100%, how many lives would be saved? Standing with us today is Nick Agnew, Sarah's dad, and he's standing here because Sarah knew how to do CPR when her dad had a heart attack. And we wanted to recognize Sarah, and I want to recognize Alderman Fleming, who brought Sarah to our attention, and we quickly said, "Of course, we want to recognize her for her extremely heroic effort in saving the life of her father, Nick Agnew." As she performed CPR after seeing he was in distress, her calmness and patience played a tremendous role during a very difficult time. Chief, we have a more, we have, actually, Sarah, this is pretty uncommon, we actually have two awards for you, not just, not just one. So, if you wouldn't mind coming up and maybe giving this to the chief, and the chief can give a little more details on what happened and what we can all learn from that, Chief.
So, Sarah, I'd like to present to you the Saving the Fire Chief's Special Recognition. Members of the City Council, Sarah is a 13-year-old, and she's a student at Haven Middle School. And on Sunday, February 17th of this year, Sarah was attending a soccer tournament with her father Nick in Phoenix, Arizona. That morning, Mr. Agnew decided he was going to take a challenging hike up a nearby mountainside and then back to the hotel room for a quick shower. But shortly upon his return back to the hotel room, he felt very short of breath. He wasn't feeling well. Now, Sarah had asked, you know, "Dad, are you okay?" And he said, "Yeah, I'm okay." But he quickly sat down, and with a matter of seconds, he fell unconscious. Sarah then had to drag him to the floor, and mind you, she's by herself in Phoenix in a hotel room, and her father's laying there unconscious. She quickly calls 911, and there, the dispatches were simply outstanding, as they had emergency medical dispatch training with their particular organization, and they worked together to perform CPR on Sarah's dad, Nick. Now, here is where it gets even more interesting. So, she's going through the CPR, and her phone dies. She puts the phone to the side, and by that time, she continued the CPR on her own, by herself, until the Phoenix area paramedics arrived. They quickly took over care and were able to get Nick to a local hospital in critical condition, but with back with a pulse. As an experienced paramedic, I know that it's incredibly rare to get a save like that unless that CPR is being executed by a bystander before paramedics arrive. And I really have very little doubt the fact that, Sarah, because you acted so calmly during that unbelievably stressful situation with your father, that your great work is the reason he's standing here today. So, on behalf of the City of Evanston, the Evanston Fire Department, please accept this Fire Chief's Special Recognition Award.
Sarah, stay up there for one second, because you don't only get a Fire Chief's Award, you get a Mayor's Award. And I'm going to ask Alderman Fleming if she'll come up here with the photo. Leave it to a politician who wants to get some credit here.
Thank you. I'll get it back, I promise.
Chief, come on, come on with this picture.
Sorry, stand by.
So, I actually don't know Sarah. Sarah, I think maybe plays basketball, but I was told about Sarah, a resident named Tawana Johnson, who told me about this young lady who saved her dad's life and how proud she was of her. And she just said, you know, "Can you call her and congratulate her? And, you know, we're just so excited for her, and we're so proud of her," and all that stuff. And so, obviously, I asked the Mayor to do it, because I didn't have any kind of pen to give you. Sorry, Sarah. But, so anyway, I'm glad to see you here. I just texted Tawana, she's sorry she wasn't here, I didn't let her know, but she just wanted to let you know how proud she is of you and thankful that your dad is still here.
Thank you, Tawana. All right. Few more, I've got a couple of proclamations, I've got an announcement, I'll try to get through this quickly. This is National Senior Health and Fitness Day today, so if you're a senior, it seems to be getting lower and lower in age. I guess I'm a senior now that the AARP sent me something. I hope you got out there and exercised today. If you didn't do it, do it tomorrow, but this just stresses the importance of good health for all, for all of us. I also want to recognize Canal Shores Golf Course. I don't know if you have anybody here from Canal Shores. Come on, come on up here, you guys. We are blessed, we got Carl, the President of the Board. We are blessed to have a fine organization like Canal Shores, who maintains a, initially, I suppose, a golf course, but really a beautiful natural area where people walk, where they take their dogs, people golf. And that doesn't happen, happen by accident, it happens because there's a lot of committed volunteers to that effort. They are celebrating their 100th anniversary, and I have a proclamation that I would like to give them, and quickly for the details for everyone. Whereas for 100 years, Canal Shores Course has provided recreation, green space, and affordable and accessible golf to everyone, especially children. And whereas, since its founding by Peter N. Janz in 1919, Canal Shores has always remained open, unfenced, and welcoming to all. And whereas, the golf course has grown to seamlessly integrate with the neighborhood and its community. And whereas, through personal involvement and fundraising, the community is working together to improve it and its ecology, so generations to come can enjoy it. Whereas Canal Shores celebrates its 100th year of operation this year in 2019. And whereas stewards of the course have developed the CS, that would be Canal Shores, I'm gathering, 100 strategic plan to assure that this unique golf experience, historic land, ecological vitality, and recreational use is preserved for the next 100 years. Now, therefore, I, Stephen Howard Haggerty, the Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim May 28th today as Canal Shores Day in the City of Evanston, and welcome all residents of Evanston and beyond to utilize and celebrate this community treasure. So, thank you, thank you very much. I'll come on up with this.
On behalf of Canal Shores, I just want to thank the City of Evanston for everything that it's done for us. I just want to mention that Peter Janz was actually an Alderman of Evanston back in the 1920s and early 1930s. So, again, we greatly appreciate your support and thank you for the proclamation, Mayor. Thank you.
Rather than run back up there and run down, I've got one more proclamation. This one is a really important proclamation. It was 100 years ago this year when the state of Illinois was the first to ratify the 19th Amendment. That's pretty awesome. Let me think about, think about that for a second. I don't know how many states existed in the Union at that time, but this one was the very first. And of course, the President at that time, or I believe he had sadly passed away before this first ratification, of course, was Abraham Lincoln. So, whereas Illinois and Evanston have long been at the forefront of the movement to provide women the right to vote.
And the right to vote in 1914. 14th Amendment, not in 1914.
Man, it is the 14th Amendment. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to issue you a different proclamation, though. That's a little embarrassing. We're going to issue you a different proclamation. So, the 14th Amendment, let's get that, let's get that straight. This is the right for women to vote.
The 14th Amendment is, it's the 19th.
It's the 19th Amendment, but you gotta, you gotta love Evanston. We'll debate, we'll debate everything, but it's the 19th Amendment to a woman's right to vote. Just so everybody, everybody is clear, this amendment prohibits the state and the federal government from denying the right to vote to citizens of the United States on the basis of sex. Specifically, this amendment states, "The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on the account of sex." So, it was 100 years ago that we were the first ones to ratify the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote. Whereas in Illinois and Evanston, Illinois and Evanston have long been at the forefront of the movement to provide women the right to vote. And whereas in Illinois, the first Women's Suffrage Association was established in Erville in LaSalle County in 1855, and the first statewide suffrage organization, the Illinois Women's Suffrage Association, was established in 1869. Whereas Evanston was home to influential women's suffrage organizations beginning in the 1870s, including the Women's Christians Temperance Union and the Evanston Political Equality League. And whereas Evanston women were critical to Illinois enacting the Presidential Suffrage Bill in 1913, which gave Illinois women the right to vote in federal and municipal elections. And whereas, with the enrichment, the enactment of that law, Illinois became the first state east of the Mississippi River to give women such right to vote for the President of the United States. And whereas, on June 4th, 1919, the proposed 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution was passed and sent to the states for ratification. And whereas, 100 years ago, on June 10th, 1919, Illinois became the first state to ratify the 19th Amendment, one hour prior to our neighbor, Wisconsin. And Evanston women were actively involved in Illinois being the first to vote, to ratify. And whereas Illinois led the way for necessary three-fourths of the states to ratify the 19th Amendment, which became part of the Constitution on August 26th, 1920. Now, therefore, I, Stephen Howard Haggerty, Mayor of the City of Evanston, hereby proclaim June 10th, 2019, as a day to celebrate women's rights to vote and the important role Illinois and Evanston played in achieving that right in the United States. Is there anyone here that is to receive this proclamation? Come on up, Vicki and gang.
Good. Good. Yeah, let's do, we'll do a photo up here.
Give somebody else. Would you like me to take a picture for you?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
I'm going to take one more, just kind of stand up just a little bit.
There you go. I'll give you my email.
As Mayor Haggerty's making his way back to the dais, I do want to make a note that in 1892 election here in Evanston, women were able to vote for the first time in municipal election. That is a part of the history of Evanston, years before the state ratified the 19th Amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here, Haggerty.
There you go. I'll give you my email. Thank you so much.
As Mayor Haggerty's making his way back to the dais, I do want to make a note that in 1892 election here in Evanston, women were able to vote for the first time in municipal election. That is a part of the history of Evanston, years before the state ratified the 19th Amendment.
Thank you, Clerk Reed, for mentioning that. The initial proclamation was even longer than the one that I read, and it had that stat, and it had that stat in there. So, thank you for sharing that with everybody. We are now going to move to City Manager announcements. So, today, our City Manager is celebrating his 10th wedding anniversary, so we have sitting in his stead Kimberly Richardson, our Deputy City Manager. So, I turn it over to you, Kimberly.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to bring up Ike Obo, our interim Health and Human Services Director, to speak on "We're Out Walking."
Good day, Members of the Council. Ike Obo, interim Health Director, Health and Human Services Department. And I'm here to talk about WOW. As we all know, WOW has been a mainstay in Evanston. It was formerly called "Women Out Walking." Now, it's called "We Aren't Walking." And we have our kickoff starting on June 15th at ETHS, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Please show up. It is a program which encourages people to walk and increase physical activity, to reduce cardiovascular diseases and any diseases associated with even activity. So, I'm encouraging everyone, tell your friends, tell your folks, please show up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ike. Can I please have Laura Timminway, our Parks Rec and Community Service Director, come up to present the U.S. Life Saving Presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Clerk Reed. The City of Evanston's Beach Lifeguard Program has been designated as a Certified Lifeguard Agency by the United States Life Saving Association, becoming the only current USLA-certified agency on the Great Lakes. The City of Evanston Lifeguard Service now joins the ranks of such elite lifeguard services such as Maui Ocean Safety in Hawaii, Long Beach Township Beach Patrol, as well as Miami Beach Ocean Rescue. The USLA is America's professional association of beach lifeguards and open water rescuers, and its guidelines are considered consistent with those of the highest quality open water life-saving programs in the United States. The USLA certification guideline serves as an accreditation system for local lifeguard training programs. Tonight, we have with us to present the award, the President and Vice President of the USLA Association, Mr. Joe Pocario and Mr. Jerry Gavin.
The USLA certification process is a rigorous one. There's a lot, there's a lot that is required, training equipment, and all kinds of things like that. The City of Evanston has met those requirements excellently, excellently. So, on behalf of the Board of Directors of the USLA, I present the certification to Evanston.
So, while we're here, also, before we go, Mr. Mayor, we want you to come down and take a picture with us, please. Come on, gentlemen. So, the second part of our announcement, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, I want to bring to your attention. Here by my side is Adam Abijian, our Program Coordinator, who is the individual responsible for all of our lakefront activities. Adam is a member of the Chicago Lakefront Safety Task Force, and we want to give you a brief update on some of the work the city has been participating in with other municipalities.
So, this year, the City of Chicago had a drowning last summer, and they decided to put together a Water Safety Task Force for the purposes of looking at drowning as a regional issue, drowning as an overscaping issue, something a little bit larger than just lifeguards on beaches, lifeguard training. And in that process, we worked with the Chicago Fire Department, Chicago Police Department, Lurie's Children Home, as well as Wilmup Park District, and DNR, and a bunch of other agencies that came together to try to look at drowning as a whole. In that process, we are now taking what we have learned, what we have talked about, and actually trying to put it into, to work in a regional setting. One of those regional settings will be Evanston. We're going to take a water safety plan and try to convert it to what we're doing here. And in that process, we have found, we've actually made a couple of steps already. We are getting 25 life jackets and 25 throw bags to put in all the patrol vehicles for the City of Evanston Police Department. And in that process, we'll also train them on those items, and we will also, you know, have an opportunity for them to use them in a setting like the lakefront. They've already had some rescue equipment in the past, but we wanted to kind of boost that, and that is actually through a grant from IDNR, through the Coastal Management Program, and through NOAA. So, we wanted to thank, I wanted to personally thank you guys for helping, for the city itself for allowing us to take water safety seriously, and that the council actually takes water safety seriously and supports our efforts, and my, and my colleagues and bosses for doing the same. So, thank you very much.
Can I please have, join us back up again, Chief Scott, to do fire department promotions?
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Richardson. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Clerk Reed, good evening. It's my distinct pleasure to introduce to you this evening three command staff promotions that occurred just on the 17th, and I'd like to introduce them and give some of the background for each of these fine individuals. First, we have Deputy Chief Paul Polup. Deputy Chief Polup is a 23-year veteran of the fire department, serving as a firefighter, paramedic, fire apparatus operator, captain, acting shift chief, and division chief of EMS and fire operations. Chief Polup has been instrumental in virtually every facet of the department's operations, including critical upgrades in our emergency medical reporting and our billing systems. He has been awarded multiple department accommodations, including the Craig Stiles Award in 2012 and 2013, and he's currently completing the Illinois Chief Fire Officer Designation, which is the highest level of certification in the state of Illinois for a fire officer. To his immediate right, I would like to introduce our new Chief of Emergency Management and Logistics, Division Chief Kim Kuhl. Chief Kuhl's been serving the citizens of Evanston since May of 2000. She has served as a firefighter, paramedic, captain, and acting shift chief. She's also been a member of our mentoring, training, and SOG committees. She's also served on our underwater dive rescue team. She holds three bachelor's degrees in philosophy, biological science, and fire science management, and is currently near completion of her executive master's degree in emergency and disaster management from the prestigious Georgetown University. And last, I'd like to introduce, to her right, is our new Division Chief of Training and Special Operations, Matt Smith. Division Chief Smith has been serving the citizens of Evanston since February of 2006 as a firefighter, paramedic, fire apparatus operator, and captain. He is an active member of the Mavis Division Three Technical Rescue Team Training Committee, and is, also is a training committee, and has served as President of the Evanston Firefighters Local 742. He is a state-certified technician level in every technical rescue discipline, and has two master's degrees, one in chemistry and one in public safety leadership and administration. He also has been awarded multiple department accommodations, including the Craig Stiles Award and the St. Francis EMS Golden Stethoscope. Now, I'm a very big believer in the maxim that past behavior is the best predictor for future performance, and that's why I have 100% confidence that the individuals behind me are going to do an outstanding job for this fire department and for this great city. They have over 55 combined years of service to the city, they've done so at the highest level, and so would you please join me in congratulating each of them this evening?
Congratulations again, yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thanks very much.
Okay, so that wraps up City Manager announcements. I hope everybody took note of the great partnership that exists between our Fire Department and our Police Department, that our police chief got up to take a picture of all of those promoters, so nice going there, chief. Now we're going to move over to our City Clerk and announcements that he has tonight.
Yes, I just want to, before I get into my announcements, I have the honor of swearing in firefighters. It's a part of my regular duty as a City Clerk. And when I went to the swearing-in ceremony a few weeks ago, I noticed something interesting, which was, for the first time in my two years here, I was swearing in a woman, a firewoman. And it was a great honor, and all of these folks are great folks, but I had a conversation with Captain Kuhl, with Commander Kuhl, and the conversation that I had is when she started in 2000, she was one of 109, she was one woman out of 109 firefighters. She then told me that there are a bunch of us now. There are now, I believe, six out of 109 firefighters. So it is a great honor to have you serving on our force, and all of you, and all of the brave men and women who run into buildings to save us. So to go into my statement for today, leading into Memorial Day weekend, Mayor Hagerty put forward a proposal to name three additional Freedom of Information Officers. Introducing his proposal on the Friday before a long weekend is inconsistent with Evanston's democratic values. The manner in which this proposal has been introduced was meant to ensure the fewest Evanstonians possible would be aware of its existence. The preamble to the Illinois Freedom of Information Act lays out the importance of FOIA to our democracy. It declares access to full and complete information regarding the affairs of government and the official acts and policies of public officials and employees. FOIA is key to enabling the people to discuss public issues fully and freely, make informed political judgments, and monitor government to ensure that it is working in the public interest. When it comes to a service as important as FOIA, we should be having a thoughtful public discussion, not a rushed vote, because FOIA was created to give residents power to hold government accountable, not to make elected officials feel comfortable. Let me first state, the mayor's proposal will unequivocally weaken the authority of the City Clerk, an elected official whose office is directly accountable to the public, by reassigning the vast majority of public records to Freedom of Information Officers accountable only to the City Manager. The mayor believes his proposal will provide parity with Evanston's former practice of having multiple Freedom of Information Officers, similar to other communities. I must remind the mayor of the facts. The 2014 FOIA policy did designate three FOIA officers. However, all three of these officers were staff of the City Clerk's office, including the clerk himself. After the passage of Resolution 87R17, the City Clerk was named as Ex officio Freedom of Information Officer. The clerk was granted the authority to designate other Freedom of Information Officers. Under our current arrangement, I am the Freedom of Information Act Officer, as is the Deputy Clerk. Seasonal staff are available to assist as directed. Built upon the false supposition that the clerk is the sole FOIA officer, the mayor's proposal attempts to solve a capacity problem that cannot be clearly articulated nor supported with facts and data. The mayor's memo is not incorrect when citing figures demonstrating records requests have nearly doubled since 2016. However, it is not clearly explained how this has caused a strain on the system or a delay beyond statutory limits. As the city's lead Freedom of Information Officer, I was never consulted on the merits of the mayor's proposal, nor brought in to provide insight on any of the perceived issues. Upon taking office two years ago, I sought to align services provided by the clerk's office with our new mission, to be Evanston's Office of Transparency and Public Participation. A review of the city's organizational chart shows the residents at the top above the mayor, council, and city manager. Adjacent to the residents is the clerk's office. We serve as the public's assistant, as a conduit of information, and as the first stop for concerned citizens looking to ensure government fully reflects our values of equity. To realize this vision, I struck a good faith agreement with the mayor and the city manager. Passport and real estate transfer stamps were relocated to the collector's office with the promise of an alternative advocacy-oriented service, such as property tax appeals, being moved into the clerk's office. While many parts of this bargain were never upheld, the office was granted the ability to handle the substantially increased flow of FOIA requests. It is exactly because of this realignment that we are able to support residents when city departments attempt to deny access to records requests. We take the time to follow up with the Attorney General's FOIA Pre-清零 Department and other relevant government agencies. Oddly enough, there are a number of recorded examples with the Police Department, Law Department, and the Collector's Office where I have successfully contested the improper withholding of records. And those were all offices deemed to be named FOIA officers within the mayor's proposal. As an example, with the Police Department Records Bureau, I wrote to the Office of the Attorney General after a local law student was denied records relating to gang member identification criteria. My advocacy resulted in the Police Department reversing their decision and providing nearly 800 pages of our gang member database going back to the 1990s with names and birthdays redacted. An example with the Law Department. I contested the Law Department's attempt to improperly cite a 71C exemption for personal privacy. This was used as a justification to redact the names of businesses after information was requested regarding letters of intent for payments made by corporate entities for the use of the New Robert Crown Community Center. This information was eventually released. An example with the Collector's Office. A member of the public sought a list of the city's top 30 sales tax producers, sales tax revenue producers. The department head, who would supervise the mayor's proposed secondary FOIA officer, recommended the city deny the request in its entirety. I stepped in and established that the list of businesses was not exempt, only the dollar amounts demonstrating tax revenue generated by the individual businesses. Lastly, we cannot ignore the context in which this proposal was introduced. A few weeks ago, I filed a lawsuit for declarative action relating to FOIA. The lawsuit focuses on the city's refusal to comply with state law as it relates to the release and retention of body camera footage, and corporation councils claim that I, the elected City Clerk of Evanston, am not a client of the Evanston Law Department, thus restricting my access to review certain records to ensure all redactions were made in compliance with FOIA. The city maintains the stance that I am unable to receive responsive copies of body camera footage for retention in accordance with the law because third parties, as they claim, are unable to receive those records. This is categorically false. The point of these videos being eligible for public inspection is to deter a delay in justice, as we witnessed with the execution of Laquan McDonald by Officer Jason Van Dyke. I am uniquely versed in laws regulating the public's right to access government records. I chose to run for clerk to uphold those rights at every juncture. I've raised the issues presented in my suit internally for two years, but to no avail. Seeking judicial intervention was the last resort. Evanston may well be the first community in Illinois with the office of an independently-elected official solely responsible for the administration of the Freedom of Information Act. The Evanston I believe in has never been afraid to lead on smart policy. Having a public records officer who is directly accountable to the public is an example of Evanston leading on smart, good government policy, and championing municipal transparency. Park Ridge, Glenview, Arlington Heights, DeKalb, Highland Park, and Naperville, the municipalities cited in the mayor's memo, are not analogous to Evanston. A young black engineering student finishing his PhD wasn't assaulted and arrested for stealing his own car in Park Ridge. A 12-year-old black boy and girl weren't arrested for riding on bike pegs in Naperville. A young black candidate for City Clerk wasn't arrested for petitioning the day before a filing deadline in DeKalb. The communities listed in the mayor's memo lack Evanston's diversity, socioeconomic issues, and history. As the mayor's proposal stands, it fails to achieve any of the goals it has set forth. The only outcome is that my lawsuit becomes moot, and the City of Evanston receives a rollback in public accountability and transparency. I look forward to a thoughtful debate and the opportunity to provide further insight on Evanston's FOIA process. My questions to Mayor Hagerty are, what demonstrable problem does this proposal seek to solve? How will this proposal address your perceived concerns? What has changed since the last FOIA debate, other than my lawsuit for transparency, warranting this drastic change in policy? Why would you propose action on policy without first consulting stakeholders? Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. We're going to move into public comment. Alderman, Rainey, did you have anything urgent? Can we get to public comment? I'm sorry. Okay. All right, so we're going to move into public comment. We've got 22 speakers today. As everybody knows, we set aside 45 minutes for public comment, divided by the number of speakers. So I'm going to ask everybody if you keep your remarks to two minutes or less tonight. I'm going to ask Clerk Reed, as he always does, to keep track of the time. If you hear a little alarm go off, please wrap it up in about 10 seconds. Again, lots of people want to talk. And then I'm going to ask Ms. Richardson if she will just keep track of the overall time. Per our rules, we have to get this wrapped up in 45 minutes, and then we begin the business of the city. So with that, we're going to move into public comment, and we've got Harris Miller up first, then Mike Vasilko, then Curtis Evans. So welcome, Harris. And then I'll read off every three, and so folks can just line up so we can get through this.
Good evening. Harris Miller, Fourth Ward. Please oppose SP1 Resolution 57R19. I'm concerned that Clerk Reed will be bypassed on FOIA requests. His job will be diminished by employees who report to the City Manager. It's solely his responsibility as a voice of the people to maintain transparency. If council rubber stamps this, expect inquiries into Evanston's government accountability. Also, it was wrong that last week's Robert Crown meeting did not allow for public comment that citizens find questionable. It was on index cards instead. It possibly violated the Illinois Open Meetings Act with five of nine aldermen present. The people, we the people, smell corruption and a loss of democracy from machine politics. It's controlling your decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, we've got Mike Vasilko, Curtis Evans, then James Engelmann. Welcome, Mike.
Mike Vasilko, Sixth Ward. Vote against SP1. It is solely political payback. That's pretty clear. SP1 is not designed to help FOIA responses. In fact, the so-called additional FOIA officers are intended to thwart the flow of information the public should see. Devon Reed and the clerk's office are doing a great job responding to FOIAs. I'm not aware of any complaints about the FOIA response time, or despite the increased number of FOIAs. The problem isn't Devon Reed. The problem isn't the clerk's office. In fact, Devon Reed seems to be the only elected official consistently dedicated to doing the people's work. Devon is our FOIA officer. We want that to stay that way. The city's initiative to dilute the FOIA process is SP1, as described. The city wants to minimize the clerk's authority, and is the latest in a long line of attempts to marginalize Devon as an individual, a black individual, who has worked very hard to serve Evanston. Don't gift-wrapped SP1 as if you're doing the citizens a favor. Be honest. SP1 is intended to further deny information to the public. During last week's fiasco of a community meeting, we asked again about the redacted Tefra Hearing Memo. We asked Wally separately in a meeting afterwards about the redacted memo. We've yet, after months, to get any kind of response to that redacted memo. Now you want to turn the FOIA authority over to the Law Department, who were the responsible people for heavily redacting many FOIA responses. The council has verbally and procedurally attacked the City Clerk ever since he was elected. Last week, an alderman threatened the City Clerk with physical harm. What does the council have against Devon Reed? For some of you, it may be because he's a young black man. Or maybe it's because the people of Evanston adore Devon Reed, and that threatens you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Curtis Evans, James Engelmann, then Jackson Poller.
Hello, Curtis Evans, Second Ward. I would like to read from the city's own website regarding transparency. The City of Evanston strives to promote transparency in all operations. By providing as much data as possible through our website, residents can be better informed about what is going on in their city. It is our hope that by being transparent, we can help improve our effectiveness and the efficiency of city operations. That's from our own website. And all of the city employees will sign a City of Evanston Information Technology and Resources Policy Use, Policy on Acceptable Use. And what this states, for everybody who uses a computer, a phone, any device as an employee of the city, that employees and other users should have no expectation of privacy in connection with the use of city information technology resources, including the creation, entry, receipt, storage, or transmission of data. And this does go on to say, the City of Evanston user acknowledgement is to be signed by every employee, intern, or volunteer who uses a technology device issued by the City of Evanston. So as a city, we are here for transparency. That is what it says right in our website. Every city employee, whether they are police, law, anybody sitting here that uses any technology device issued by the city, realizes that there is no expectation of privacy. I firmly support City Clerk Reed and their office, and his office, to be the gatekeepers of this information for those of us who live here in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. James Engelmann, Jackson Poller, and then Leela Rab. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing anyone's name. Welcome, James.
Hi, my name is James Engelmann, and I'm from the Fifth Ward. And I would like to, a couple days ago, a group of us from over at Rainbow Hill, Upper Rim, went to Triggs Park, and we were going to, near the picnic tables. And see, I live, there's thirty-three of us, but there's thirty-two bill chairs, and they couldn't go up to the table because the bench was there, built-in bench. So I was thinking, if you could remove one side of the bench, so the bill chairs could go near the table, it would be better, or half of the bench. Thank you very much.
Thank you, James, and we always appreciate your very specific things. Kimberly, if we can just have the city staff look into that?
Because I am a very activist person for the disabled persons, people.
You're a great spokesperson. Thank you, James. We've got Jackson Poller, Leela Rab, and then Vicky Pasenko.
Good evening. My name is Jackson Poller. I'm a resident of the First Ward and a member of Reclaim Evanston, who has and continues to support Clerk Reed. I would like to speak against Mayor Hagerty's proposal to add additional FOIA officers, specifically the problem that I see with giving the Evanston Police Department authority to process all of their own FOIA requests. I would expect a city like ours would pride itself on transparency in all parts of government function, especially issues like police accountability. And giving the Police Department this authority appears to represent a move in the exact opposite direction, a severe move away from transparency. And one thing I would also like to add, if any members of the council believe that no abuse of power would take place, I would just say that it only takes the appearance of impropriety, which this proposal certainly has, to do damage to public trust. Simply pointing out that precedents that exist in neighboring municipalities is also not a good justification for moving this proposal forward. That is a classic example of an appeal to authority, or appeal to popularity, excuse me, logical fallacy. Increasing the city's ability to respond to FOIA requests in a timely manner is a valid goal, and if there's a genuine interest in moving forward on that, it may- goal, and if there's a genuine interest in moving forward on that, it merits discussion. But it can't be done like this. We cannot do that at the expense of transparency. Please keep FOIA request responses accountable to the democratic process, and please vote no on Resolution 57R-19.
Great. Thank you, Jackson. Leela Rab, Vicky Posenko, and then Elliot Zashin.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, Devon Reed, and city council members. This council opened with words of freedom, freedom. This is called the Freedom of Information Act Officers. And this looks like a denial of the freedom that was given to us when, finally, this was passed, that we could actually ask. And I know from reading newspapers and listening to Trump stuff, you know, that there's all kinds of obstacles to getting to the information. How could you possibly do this? How could you possibly take our city clerk, who also was asked and confronted when he handed out his petitions? We knew he had courage. We admire our black population. We're always talking about saving people, keeping it diverse, and yet, we get something named designation of additional Freedom of Information Act officers. I looked at it, and I said, hey, they're going to get help for Devon. And then they explained it to me. This is appointed. Oh, yes, we really want to remove our elected person for an appointee that is with a council that has been very divisive and not transparent, because most people aren't. But we have to accept this transparency when we are in public office. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Leela. Vicky Posenko, Elliot Zashin, and then Tina Stevenson.
Hello. My name is Vicky Posenko, and I am the co-founder and co-president of the Evanston Animal Shelter Association. Tonight, you're scheduled to vote to extend the contract between the city and ESA, and I feel it is important to make sure you understand our role in the community. While we certainly care for the animals, you can't care for animals without impacting people. So in many ways, we are as much of a social services organization as we are an animal organization. Whether it's the senior whose dog has an ear infection, and she participates in our senior safety net program, because she can't afford the vet visit and the medication, and we pick up the cost. Or the family who lost their home, and with that faced the loss of their beloved pet as well. But through our custodial program, we care for the pet, free of charge, while they get their life back on track. Or the man who is dying of cancer and has to give up his cats because he can't care for them anymore. So he brings them to us, and we promise to take good care of them, giving him some peace of mind during a very difficult time. Or it's the family who takes advantage of the free rabies vaccination and microchip clinic that we hold every year. Or maybe it's just the young family who is going home with a new puppy or kitten filled with joy and excitement. All of these things take place at the Evanston Animal Shelter. Almost every transaction that involves an animal also involves people. Yes, we are animal people, and we do what we do because we love the animals, but our impact on the community is much more than just animal care. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vicky. We've got Elliot Zashin, Tina Stevenson, then Mary Rosinski.
Elliot Zashin, 9th Ward. I'm a member of Reclaim Evanston and an active leader. I want to explain why we oppose this resolution. When Devon Reed ran for office, we supported him because of his values, his commitment to citizen participation, his independence of mind, his interest in innovation, and his eloquence. We know that at times Clerk Reed may have irritated or upset colleagues, but we have not found reason to doubt his commitments. He understands the connection between robust, independent implementation of the FOIA responsibility and transparency in local government. And transparency is an integral part of responsible governance. On a number of occasions, I have thought city officials have not been especially forthcoming about their decisions or motivations or rationales, but I have chosen not to suspect self-interest or some aligned purpose. If we, the citizens, the voters, are to have confidence in our local government, in our local officials, there must be transparency. Clerk Reed understands this well. So I urge you to vote against this proposal, or at the very least, table it until you can bring back a convincing and thorough demonstration of the necessity for this change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elliot. Mary Rosinski, excuse me, Tina Stevenson, Mary Rosinski, then Robert Cruz.
Hi. I'm Tina Stevenson. I've been a resident of Evanston for nine years, and I took the time to vote for Devon Reed. And he represents, you know, my vote. And I feel that what the city council is doing is trying to undercut the people who voted for Devon Reed, because for some reason, you want to remove some of his powers. And the Freedom of Information Act is so important to our democratic rights, and I feel comfortable that Devon Reed is carrying out the different duties that are involved with the Freedom of Information Act. So I'd like to see the city council keep those powers with Devon Reed and not undercut our votes, the majority that voted for him, so that he won the election. That is just underhanded to, you know, vote for someone and then take away his powers when he wins. Sounds like Trump. And we can't have that in Evanston.
Thank you, Tina. We've got Mary Rosinski, Robert Cruz, and then Christopher Kruger.
Hi, Mary Rosinski. I'm going to just read my thing so I don't get off track. I'm here because I believe that complacency is the enemy of democracy, and that people should ask questions and get accurate answers from their elected officials without being marginalized. More FOIAs are being requested because more residents across our city are questioning the information and process that's going on here. When you see a rising question and discontent, trying to silence the voice, like we did at last Monday's meeting, by asking residents to watch a 90-minute propaganda video, and then choosing the questions which you will answer, is not democratic. It's shameful. Diluting the ability of our city clerk to fulfill the responsibility for his elected office and the Freedom of Information Act request is not efficient or democratic. It's shameful. Many of the Robert Crown project questions answered remain unanswered, and the ones which have been answered seem to contradict each other. The relationship between the city and the friends and fundraising and accounting of donations and prepaid rental time versus awards spoken is sketchy as, and you all know what the last word is. You can say that Robert Crown was a community-driven project, but there were no community meetings which asked the general public if they wanted to spend $2.6 to $3 million a year for this project, or how they would have spent that money. This project was originally started out as a $1 million a year project, spent $30 million, and soared $20 to $30 million with donation amounts, and it was not represented to the people. Now it looks like we're going to borrow $50 million for this project, and I want the stakeholders to get in the game and bring this project into the realm of reason. You can't hide behind the daycare, library, and gym for the absurd cost of this project. This is about ice. It's about hockey. And we need to get the private interests who drove this cost up. And one of the reasons that I so firmly believe, and I want everyone to see this, is this was redacted by the law office. This is what a FOIA coming out of there is. And this shows all the different numbers. And if you look at this, you'll see a lot of different numbers for the Robert Crown project. Part of it is, at one point, we're paying $30 million, and Friends is getting $17. And then a year later, we're paying $35 million, and we're getting $10 million. And then we're in 2018, and we're paying $50 million, and Friends is not paying anything except for $5 million, which is going to go towards its $3 million or a $2 million debt in 2022. All we asked was, we want some real answers in, oh, I'm sorry, Steve, but we just need answers, and then the FOIAs will stop.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. All right. We've got Robert Cruz, Christopher Kruger, then Patrick Keenan Devlin.
I was born at Evanston Hospital. I went to Haven for kindergarten. I think you've all heard that before. But I'm a Vietnam veteran, came back to Evanston, and fully support Devon. And in 1970, I had a First and 14th Amendment lawsuit against the Secretary of the Navy, and we settled out of court. I think this FOIA event is very similar to a freedom of, I'm sorry, the Freedom of Speech and Due Process of Law. And I think we ought to continue to support Devon in what he's doing.
Thank you, Robert. We've got Christopher Kruger, Patrick Keenan Devlin, then Ray Friedman.
Mr. Mayor, city council, Mr. Clerk, I rise in opposition to the resolution and in support of the person on that podium who received the most votes of anybody in this room, Devon Reed. I want to thank Clerk Reed for filing lawsuit against the city. And I urge, I urge any aggrieved FOIA requister to file lawsuit against this city, because this city should be forthcoming in what it is doing with the taxpayers' money. This is a power, this is a dilution of the clerk's powers. And make no mistake, this is a power grab. And I read your email, Alderman Wilson, every thing you said to the Nichols neighbors is erroneous. You've gotten it wrong, every time. Initially, the council was dismissive of Clerk Reed. Then the council has waited, and now this is a calculated move to strip him of his powers that we voted for. The people voted. So this is an attack on the voters. This resolution is an attack on the voters of Evanston. It's an attack on governmental transparency, and we will remember. We will remember these attacks, and we will remember who led these attacks. We demand transparency in our government. Every municipality state, every corporate municipal corporation has more FOIA requests. So deal with that. We elected Devon Reed to be a FOIA officer, and we knew what we were doing, and we expect you to follow the mandate that we gave. So I'm opposed to this motion, and the voters will remember these activities against Clerk Reed. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got Patrick Keenan Devlin, Ray Friedman, then Jillian Gilborn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Patrick Keenan Devlin. I'm a resident of the 3rd Ward, and I'm the executive director of the James B. Moran Center for Youth Advocacy. I'm here tonight to briefly speak to ordinance 159-0-18 and the accompanying Resolution 68-R-18. Mr. Mayor, as a member of the Alternative to Rest Committee, we've been working in a collaborative manner for nearly two years, and this proposal and the ordinance that accompanies it is a culmination of that work. I just like to briefly outline what this ordinance accomplishes. So first, under this plan, the city would offer confidential hearings for children, cited with ordinance violations outside of school hours and in a less intimidating forum. Children would appear before an ALJ and receive a hearing preserving their rights to due process. But if the minor then pleads liable or is found liable, the administrative law judge would provide youth with the option of paying a fine or participating in a restorative, supportive intervention. In a collaborative process, the child and community team would craft an agreement that meets the individualized needs of each minor. The ordinance lists out what those are: substance abuse, education counseling, career training, victim offender mediation, et cetera. The city and the community will work to support and empower the minor in repairing the harm caused and satisfying the terms of the agreement within a four-month time span. Fines would then only be imposed if the minor fails in fulfilling the terms of the agreement. This proposal asks an important question: How can we help, as opposed to how can we punish? This ordinance also accomplishes a codification of theft under $500 and retail theft within our city code. The proposed ordinance importantly also expands alternatives to arrest and offers this important off-ramp from the criminal justice system for all individuals. Lastly, the ordinance importantly offers community service as an alternative to fines for all individuals who may be unable to afford the high costs associated with city fines. So, Mr. Mayor, I also would like to just end by saying just a deep appreciation for Deputy City Manager Kimberly Richardson, our presiding judge, Susan Brunner, Parks and Recreation Director Lawrence Hemingway, I've got a lot more names, Kevin Brown, our Youth and Young Adult Division Manager, and the City of Evanston's youth advocates, because they have been so thoughtful in thinking through the implementation of these ordinance, of this ordinance and the resolution. And then the entire Alternative to Rest Committee that was led by Alderman Peter Braithwaite, we're so grateful for your leadership, Alderman, Alderman Ravel, Alderman Fleming, and Alderman Wilson, as well as Pastor Michael Neighbors, Sean Jones, and Becky Biller. And last but not least, we also had an incredible team of community members, Karen Demers of the Youth Job Center, Carolyn Fraser of Northwestern Prisker School of Law, and Sarah Silins of Northwestern School of Law. We had Erica Storley and Mario Tredo, who's no longer with us. Chief Eddington, Chief Cook, Deputy Chief Barnes, Commander Garner, Commander Wright, and Sergeant Hart. I could not leave anybody out, because, Mr. Mayor, it's been an incredible process. So thank you.
Thank you. So to summarize, we had everybody at the table. Which is good, which is what you need.
Everybody in, nobody out. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. All right. We've got Ray Friedman, Jillian Gilborn, and then Rodney Green.
Good evening. I cut my comments down to 39 pages. Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, city council, city manager, and city clerk. What is it we're trying to accomplish here? What is the purpose and intent? I thought we were working on transparency and accountability. The voters chose Devon Reed as city clerk for this office and to handle FOIA requests. We had this discussion two years ago, so the question now is, why would we be requesting FOIA information from departments that are not releasing this information now? Wouldn't that be counterproductive? What is it you don't want us to know? The practice of approving projects and then bringing them to the public for our approval later is not working here. And then we can't have a productive discussion on the financing of projects that we are paying for. And you wonder why our residents are so angry. We have repeatedly asked for discussions to voice our concerns. Mayor Hagerty had a productive town hall meeting at the Ecology Center recently. All of our questions were not answered, but it was a start, and we should be having these meetings at least once a month. Now, our Alderman, Peter Braithwaite, requested a meeting for last Monday with City Manager Bob Kowitz to answer financial questions on Robert Crown. We waited a long time for this meeting, and the day of this meeting, you announced a 90-minute presentation, and then we can write our questions on cards to be read by Alderman Braithwaite, if he chose them. This bait-and-switch meeting is not acceptable, and I believe we are owed an apology here. People got babysitters, took the time and trouble to come to City Hall for a discussion, not a presentation. Please understand the frustration and anger in the room, as this is the atmosphere that you created. And by the way, I did watch your video on finances for Robert Crown recently, and it did not answer most of our questions. And you really should have sent this video to all of us well before this meeting on 5/20. We need answers. We need transparency, and we need accountability. Lastly, I wanted to thank Bill Smith for listing the four items that were spoken about the most here at public comment this year. Congratulations to Doreen Price as number one, to speak most often. I can accept the number two spot. And Mike Vasilko came in number three. But seriously, Bill had a good point to say there was a limited amount of us to speak here, and what happened to the other 74,000 residents? So I would like to request, all those other 74,000 Evanston residents who are not here, please send an email to city clerk's office here and let of Information requests should go through the City Clerk's office only. We are all in favor of rebuilding Robert Crown, just very concerned about the expense. And not having proper access to all FOIAs will severely hinder the democratic process for all of us as required by law. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. We've got Jillian up next, then Rodney Green, then Carl Klein.
Hello. My name is Jillian Gilborn. I'm a Northwestern student, a resident of the First Ward, and I've been interning in Clerk Reed's office for the past few months, but will be leaving at the end of this week. I first got involved in Evanston politics by volunteering on Mayor Hagerty's campaign. I was amazed by how receptive Evanston seemed to constituent need, especially compared to my hometown of Phoenix, Arizona. I took the position with Clerk Reed's office because I wanted to experience this good governance firsthand. I came into this building firmly believing that a future in local government would be my path to making the most positive change in my community. At the local level, I could develop innovative methods for increasing public participation that would improve the relationship between government and the community. Following this interest, over spring break, I spent a combined 20 hours alone on a series of Greyhound buses to attend an anti-political corruption conference in Nashville, Tennessee, where I spent four days feeling so lucky, because while everyone else complained about how they were constantly fighting their local governments, I knew that Evanston, my adopted home, would always uphold the values of public participation and transparency. I'm addressing you today because I feel I have been proven wrong. For the past few months, I have seen Clerk Reed use his vast knowledge of FOIA law to make this government as fair and transparent as possible. As a young person with dreams of working in government, I am disheartened by Mayor Hagerty, someone I genuinely look up to, and his proposal to place FOIA in the hands of non-elected staff. This is not the good governance that I once loved and respected Evanston for, and I hope that tonight's debate might persuade the council of this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. We've got Rodney Green, excuse me, Rodney, yeah, we've got Rodney Green, then Carl Klein, then Meg Welch.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, council members, and Deputy Clerk Richardson. I'm here to speak on SP1, and want to start off by saying I am not here to petition for the job. I'm happy doing what I'm doing now. I'm acting, so I'm on TV if you want to see me. I come here today because I feel that something strange and inherent should be, is going on. Number one is that I know that Alderman suffered in the very beginning of the new officers coming into place. Ask Clerk Reed three times, can you do the job that the city code requires of you to do? He hesitated, and then after the third time, he said, "No, I need help." The FOIA officer never was the clerk's job to redact or to have any other police records or firemen records, because those departments had their own records. The clerk does not have the authority to hold back FOIA requests because they don't like what's been said, and the clerk's office is the only one that receives and disperses FOIA records and requests. It is not up to, if you're going to put in some new officers to help out with the FOIAs, I suggest that it does not come from the city manager's office, does not come from the legal office, does not come from the mayor's office, but maybe an independent person who knows the FOIA laws and that can help get this FOIA stuff straightened up. So I am in favor of this with those recommendations to go along with SP1. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney. Carl Klein, Meg Welch, then Doreen Price.
Tonight, I am speaking on the proposed text amendment to allow office uses and revise special conditions for office uses within residential districts. This will come before the Plan Commission tomorrow evening. I have some issues with which I would like to address tonight, but first, let me remind you that there was a vote to reconsider the ordinance granting a zoning change and the office-building plan development, which was voted down on March 18th. Alderman Rainey, you were right. The motion to table the vote to reconsider the ordinance has been languishing. It has been over six weeks with absolutely no word from the city or Alderman Fisk about progress in facilitating what she said would be, quote, "a substantial discussion within the community," unquote. Remember, this was the purpose of the motion for reconsideration. Generally, this text amendment appears to be a solution in search of a problem. What is wrong with the zoning lots that are adjacent to the D2 and D3 district? That is, the list of properties affected by the proposed text amendment. The buildings on these lots are mostly residential and have been occupied for decades. They offer the city a decent amount in property taxes. Also, office use is already allowable in R5 and R6 zoned areas as our planned developments. If this is a veiled attempt at compiling a list of potential sites for future planned developments, then that is most concerning. We have a housing crisis. The city shouldn't be removing residential units for offices. The city shouldn't threaten nationally significant sites. Most of these affected lots have significant buildings. The city should not place these properties in jeopardy. The owners of the affected properties and all those within 500-foot radius of those properties in three different wards most likely do not know about this proposed text amendment discussed tomorrow at the Plan Commission. They have not been properly notified within 48 hours of the Plan Commission meeting tomorrow evening. The Evanston Review published a notice, but I doubt anyone saw it. It is interesting that this text amendment is going straight to the full Plan Commission. Text amendments are supposed to go to the zoning committee first. Let's follow the proper procedure. I encourage you, City Council and City staff, namely Megan Jones or Scott Mangum, to refer the proposed text amendment to the zoning committee to discuss this issue. Let's follow the proper procedure. Ultimately, it would be best if this text amendment is thrown out. This latest twist is especially distasteful because it is a blatant manipulation of zoning for one purpose: to get a building built where it does not belong. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. We've got Meg Welch, Doreen Price, then Yivvy Russell.
I have here a petition signed by Evanston residents opposing SP1. Thus far, in 72 hours, it has approaching 400 signatures and continuing. Please, this is not a good look. This was put on as a special order of business right after a holiday. Not a good look. And please do not ask us to believe that this is just something that escalated because of social media and has been politicized, and it's just a routine thing to improve operations. Please don't assume that we're that naive. So we are asking you, as Evanston residents, to vote no on SP1. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. This is also regarding SP1. So many great speakers, and I want to reiterate for the readers of Evanston now that many people are speaking with much authority and much knowledge and with so much data that I can't think of anything that would dispute their credibility in any way, shape, or form. So I hope that's supported in your publications. I am also not number one. James is number one. He's been 18 out of 18. He's my partner, sitting next to me. So I like to have the record corrected that he's number one on the list. I'm number two, and everyone else falls back happily, I'm sure. So I go, "Look at City Hall's rush to defuse the necessary powers of City Clerk Reed on today's agenda for action. An elected official, no less. Why isn't there a rush to replace Evanston's accomplished HHS director, who was asked to give up a grant-maker position as well, considered a low-budget priority when that's a person who brings in funds? There's a loss of a self-funding director position which will compromise the money needed for low-income people, which is supposed to be an equity priority. Have we forgotten equity, housing, and all those other priorities? And are we getting money from those positions? Because we don't know. Transparency part, is money from those positions being slipped into Robert Crown and other entities to fund those things that we're running short of money on in terms of defiance of what the will of the citizens are about? Bad times do not mean middle-class residents did not already pay more than their fair share in federal, city, and state taxes. If there are now unprioritized extra money, then we need to be able to account for that, and obviously, having a single reliable source of FOIA is going to be less self-serving and subject to corruption." And then I question it being in the legal department, which also reports to Wally, and that the budget investigations also report to Wally. So if you're going to try and find out and sort out Wally's accountability, you can't. And as a city manager, he needs to be more accountable because he keeps getting these good ratings, and yet we feel like we're not being listened to. And I'm just saying, have oversight and trust that we're not out to get anybody, but we want the truth, and we do it with a good heart. And I don't think there's anyone here who's speaking to be mean or nasty, just a little frustrated at times, just like you get. So, thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. Yivvy Russell, apologize if I'm mispronouncing that, and then we've got Carla Sutton, and then Nancy Serene.
Yivvy Russell, 1724 Livingston, lived here since 1981. I'm opposed to Mayor Hagerty's proposal. You intend again to waste city money, this time on salaried, appointed, not-elected officials. This move will also and mainly erode even further our democratic rights to transparency and information. Two, you're having this meeting one day after Memorial Day. Have you lost your memory? There has been, what about all those men and women who fought and died to free people who, in fact, were the relatives of many of us living in Evanston and in this country, including my relatives? They freed them from persecution, imprisonment, forced labor, and outright destruction. FOIAs represent an intrinsic human right to represent freedom, liberty, and democracy. Do not forget your dead. Do not forsake and betray your living. Support Devon. Support democracy.
Thank you. We've got Carla Sutton, Nancy Serene, then Albert Gibbs.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, members of the City Council, and Deputy Manager Richardson. I'm Carla Sutton of the Fifth Ward, and I stand to ask you to vote against SP1 for Additional Freedom of Information Act officers. If the problem is slowness and inefficiency of the current office, we should explore situations and solutions that will resolve this situation. What were the procedures of the previous city clerk as compared to the current city clerk? I advocate giving the clerk all the support he needs to do his job. What does hiring more people accomplish? You had employees before that made this information accessible to the public. With three employees, you can do it again with his same staff. I also want to support A6 for the renovation of Fleetwood Jordan, and I encourage our Alderman to utilize all necessary efforts to employ local minority contractors in the renovations of Fleetwood Jordan. And last but not least, well, second, I want to also thank you for and support Resolution 68R-18-62, or O2, for tonight, for support of the Juvenile Moran Center. And also, thank you, Chief Cook, for the camera in the 1,800 block on Darrell that has given us a sense of security and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. We've got Nancy Serene, then Albert Gibbs, and then Bobby Burns.
All right, Nancy Serene, and I'm calling, no, I'm here to say, don't vote for that Resolution 57R-19, which is Mayor Hagerty's 11th-hour stealth move to appoint FOIA officers who are beholden only to him and the city manager. That's just an abuse of power, and it's an erosion of democracy. By proposing this change, the City of Evanston is pursuing yet more secrecy and less transparency. I know, because I have had more than one FOIA improperly denied. It's in the AG's office now. I'm waiting. The city has proven itself to be secretive over many issues: Harley Clark, LBN, Robert Crown. These are issues that concern residents, and last week's so-called community meeting was a prime example of the push for secrecy. So, that proposal, Mayor Hagerty's proposal, before holiday weekend is part of the pattern of that secrecy, and approving this proposal will only make the ongoing lack of transparency worse. Finally, there are no satisfactory answers to what problem does this solve? Why now? What's the rush? And where's the public notice and discussion? Thank you.
We've got Albert Gibbs, and then Bobby Burns.
Albert Gibbs, Fifth Ward. I'd like to read something to you that I wrote in response to the Robert Crown stuff that's going on. And it was about the friends of Robert Crown and pictures taken, and I guess I think it was showing a $5-million check that was given to the City Council. If I'm wrong, I stand corrected. But what I felt at the time was that those that benefit from it the most, that park, should pay the most for it. It's your game, not mine. Bo Wood, Robert Crown, has never treated me respectfully when there throughout my entire life. They even called me the N-word as a child when I was there competing in competition, park and recreation, for Evanston. That was their welcome to me. I'm now supposed to believe that they now have love for me? Well, I'd suggest they quit playing. It's the P in the shell game. You're manipulating the few black children and your friends of the park pitchers to BS the public into thinking that you're all for the unity and the community. You better check your draws. I think you just dropped a load on yourselves. And this evening, and this Evanston City Council is aiding and abetting this sham, in my opinion, so I offer this question. So you're then embracing diversity and equity inclusion means that even during hard times of balancing this city budget, this Evanston City Council, along with the Fifth Ward, can now expect $50 to $80 million for the Foster Historic Fleetwood Jordan Rights Center, the Preservation Act for it, and the family-focused building? That's home of the only black educational school in the entire history of Evanston's existence. Can we expect to receive the same consideration? Is this how it goes for all concerned people in this city of Evanston? And if we can't expect what you call all-inclusive, equity-inclusive, diversity-inclusive, then put our money where our mouths are, on the West Side. And I'll close with saying this. I just went through an experience of filing charges against the Evanston Police Department. I was victimized. Yes, the officers treated me like I was the perpetrator of a crime. I caught hell trying to get the FOIA records to prove my point, show you how God don't like ugly. By me telling the truth, they were still able to validate that all my charges against them had been sustained. I say to those that this hasn't worked the greatest. The FOIA department, clerk's office, it may not have worked the greatest, but I now see... FOI department, clerk's office, it may not have worked the greatest, but I now see that the problem with those declaring, let's add new people, were you the ones who've been sticking your stick into the spokes to make it not work right?
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. And our last speaker today for public comment is Bobby Burns.
Mayor Alderman, Deputy Manager, City Clerk. Y'all already know what I'm here to talk about. So, I think everybody up here signed or swore to a duty of loyalty when they took office, and it's to serve in the best interest of the public and not themselves, right? And I'm going to assume tonight that y'all take that really seriously as elected officials. And so my first question is, I've spoken to a few aldermen about this. How does this -- who does this proposal serve? Because I'm not quite clear who this is in the interest of. My time as an interim deputy city clerk, I know I spoke to a lot of journalists who frequently FOIA. I spoke to residents. I spoke to activists who have experience FOIA-ing in different cities. And I can tell you that they said without question that the city of Evanston is the best place to submit FOIA requests. Because of our progressive feature that places an elected, independent office as a sole FOIA office. The reason is, most people's experience when they FOIA and try to get records from departments that are typically appointed, you're immediately seen as if you're a threat to that department. Makes sense. You're requesting records that could disclose improprieties in that department, and so it makes sense. Here in Evanston, because we have this progressive feature, we don't have that. You're welcomed into our FOIA office, right? Because it's in the clerk's office. And you're assisted through that process of getting information. And everybody in that department works to make sure you get all the records that you have a legal right to obtain. And to me, if that is not the gold standard, that is the Evanston standard that I hope folks up here maintain tonight. Not done yet. That should be your witness. When you're making this decision on whether or not this works in the best interest of the public, those should be your witnesses, the activists, right? That revealed what happened to Laquan McDonald. It should be the residents. It should be the journalists. That should be your witness. It shouldn't be yourselves. I'm sorry, y'all. It's not proper. You're the body that it seeks to hold accountable. You have to use others as your witness. And if it makes you uncomfortable, this FOIA process, and I say this with respect, it's supposed to. If it makes the Corporation Council, our FOIA arrangement, uncomfortable, it's supposed to. This process, right? When these things happen, reveals corruption, misconduct, fraud. It's supposed to make you uncomfortable. And so the fact that we have today, aldermen, I'm going to close up, who are voting potentially to remove our FOIA office, to be able to inspect these records, to make sure that the trust between the council and the community is maintained, is so deeply troubling. And on top of that, I still, to this point, and this is my closing remark, have not heard how this proposal makes Evanston better. And if you could address that today and not just say, well, we're going to do this because other cities are doing it, that is a terrible way to make public policy and public policy decisions, and y'all know that. If we didn't have cities that were all doing, uniformly all doing things that were incorrect, we would not be having such robust conversations about social equity and inclusive government. There would be no need for those conversations. Of course, there are tons of cities that are all doing things the wrong way, or doing something that's all the wrong way. Please, aldermen, aldermen win. Alderman Wilson, alderman reveal, and I'm naming y'all for a certain reason, please do the right thing, okay? If y'all want to have a real substantive discussion about this, don't do it this way. This is not proper. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. All right, that concludes public comment. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and expressing your points of view. I know it's appreciated by everybody up here. We're now going to move into the agenda. We have one item today, which is a special order of business. This is SP1, approving designation of additional Freedom of Information Officers. Resolution 57-R-19, appointing additional Freedom Information Officers, is submitted for consideration and approval. Is there anyone that wants to move that?
Approval.
Is there a second? Okay. All right. So, what we're going to do is, this is really a conversation for the City Council. The City Council is the governing body. It is not the city clerk. It is not the mayor. I did bring this forward. FOIA is something that I've been looking at for over, you know, 10 months now. And I would like to take just a minute, similar to what Clerk Reed did earlier, excuse me, yeah, Clerk Reed did earlier, just to give a statement and just to provide some background for how I arrived where I did and how this ended up on the agenda. After that, I really wanted to open it up to a conversation, again, amongst the council members as the governing authority here and not Clerk Reed or myself. This evening, I am proposing to the City Council that add three additional FOIA officers: a police department FOIA officer, a law department FOIA officer, and one additional backup FOIA officer. These are in addition to Clerk Reed, who would remain a principal FOIA officer. In this role, Clerk Reed would continue to receive citizen requests via the Next Request system, assign requests, prepare standard readily-available reports, close select cases out of the system, provide information to requesters on the appeal process of a FOIA response with a public access counselor within the Illinois Attorney General's office. I am recommending these additional FOIA officers because of the increase in the volume of FOIA requests, something I have been inquiring about and monitoring since August of 2018. Over the last two years, FOIA requests in Evanston have doubled from approximately 700 to approximately 1,400. Since residents are availing themselves of FOIA to get more information about how their government operates, I think it's prudent for the council as overseers of the city to ensure that our city has an adequate number of FOIA officers to meet this growing demand. I continue to hear feedback from residents who are concerned about the increase in FOIAs and whether we have enough FOIA officers. This isn't surprising, given what I've learned from others based on a quick review from similar local cities, all of whom have anywhere from two to 11 FOIA officers, including 10 in the police department, and that's among the six that were in the package. Given this peer data and increasing volume of FOIA requests, I believe it is in the city's best interest to add three additional FOIA officers. There would be no additional cost to the city, as two of these individuals are extensively involved in the current FOIA process, and one is a former deputy city clerk who previously served as a FOIA officer and works in the collector's office to serve as a backup officer. For those residents concerned that by adding additional FOIA offices, we will change our compliance to FOIA, I assure you that is not the case. The FOIA law is clear on what information must be released to the requester, and the exceptions that may be granted to government entities to withhold certain public records and documents. It is the Illinois Attorney General who ensures that all governments, including Evanston, are properly complying with FOIA when there are complaints to the contrary. I'm pleased that of the 1,400 FOIAs fulfilled last year, only 19 FOIA complaints, .014% were filed. In those 19 complaints, three were found in favor of the city, zero in favor of the requester, four rescinded by the Requester because of an agreement on the documents, and 12 still to be determined. Tonight, residents have spoken passionately about their right to know, which was the basis for creating the Freedom of Information Act, so that citizens can know what is happening in the operations of their government. Adding three additional FOIA officers improves our city's ability to operate effectively, puts us in line with other similar cities who are responding to similar FOIA requests, and will not hinder a resident's ability to receive public records. I would suggest that if the council were to add three additional FOIA officers, that we ask for an annual FOIA report, so that you, as our governing body, can monitor any changes and make any appropriate modifications you deem necessary. That concludes my remarks. I'm now going to open it up for public debate amongst the aldermen. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. And I've heard from a few people in the past few days, and talked to a few people. If you read the resolution and look at it carefully, a couple of observations to start. The people designated are currently working together to do this work already. So these are people that are doing the work and are expected to continue to collaborate and get the work done. That's the expectation, and that's what's happening now. Anybody who asserts that the nine people up here are not committed to transparency, it's just simply not true. That is not correct. The nine people up here are very committed to transparency. The policies we've adopted, the staff that we've supported in providing information on the webpage, and information that's pushed out, we have a lot of information. The open data system that we have in place and are continuously working on to provide additional data, it's something that the council and the staff have been driving as far as the policies are concerned, and the commitment is there. This is not a rubber-stamp council. I mean, anybody who's been here for a controversial issue knows that this is not a rubber-stamp council. We debate things in a very spirited and committed way. We often disagree, maybe most of the time we disagree, but we do so, I hope, with respect for the process. There's frustration at times, there's anger at times, there's passion at all times, but we do this with a commitment for what we think is best for the community. I don't always win. I don't always lose. But I think that we're all committed, and that's one of the things that I respect about everybody who's up here, is that I know in my heart of hearts that everybody who's doing this job and has been elected to do this job is similarly committed. Now that said, the nine of us are responsible for designating the FOIA officers. If you look at the statute, the state statute doesn't assign that job to the clerk's office. We, as a council, made a decision to continue with that policy, and this is not about the person, this is not about Clerk Reed. This is about the position in the office, and this is about the procedures and the policies and how things should work. I find it a little baffling in some of my conversations today and hearing some people talk today, I'll just come out and say it. Personally, I don't agree that giving one person 100% control over anything is a good idea as far as transparency or good governance. I think that checks and balances are required. So I think it's important for us to have those checks and balances, and I think that this is perhaps a little bit of a way to ensure that there's more than one person working on this. This does not take away the responsibility of Clerk Reed. The process, as far as the customer's concerned, you'll still walk into the clerk's office, or you'll still go on Next Request, and you'll still submit your request. And if you want or need the clerk's office to assist your request, whether it's going to the police department, the law department, or anywhere else, they're still going to be available. This does not change that procedure. It just won't. There's nothing in this resolution that takes away the clerk's opportunities to advocate for something. If a resident feels like they didn't get what they should have gotten, there's nothing that prevents them from going to Clerk Reed, and there's nothing that prevents Clerk Reed from picking up the phone and talking to the people that he currently collaborates with and I expect would continue to collaborate with. It's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that we are so quick to look for the bad in things. The first half of this meeting was filled with amazing, awesome things that we do. This is administrative. You know, I heard a few people say, you know, "I'm not going to believe you if you say..." You know, I can't make you believe me, okay? There's no way for me to make you believe me. But I know what went into my decision process, and that's all I can do, is I can just have faith and confidence in what I think is the best way to manage this business aspect of the enterprise and to make sure that it's done in the way that's most effective for our community and the people who expect a quality product. So, again, it's not about the person. This is about the process, and it's not always going to be me in this chair. It's not always going to be the same clerk in Clerk Reed's office. It's not going to be the same mayor. We're going to have different people, and that's going to evolve. So it's incumbent on us to put into place the procedures and policies that are going to ensure that the people of the city of Evanston get what they're entitled and they should be getting.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Are there any other aldermen that would like to discuss? I know Clerk Reed wants to chime in, and I do want to make sure that council members have the opportunity. If not, I'll go to Clerk Reed and give him an opportunity. Okay, Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to first start out by saying publicly to the clerk that throughout your tenureship here, I won't proclaim it, but I will state it, that I have been extremely supportive of you and your role as you are a developing and emerging leader. And I will never take that back. And so, as we discuss this, I will quote something that Lionel Jean-Baptiste, one of the key principles that he said to me, among many things, but this was the key thing, and I'll never forget it, is, "None of us here are above reproach." And so, I share that because he reminds me even till today, as I always seek his counsel on tough decisions, that this is a position that will always be examined as we are having the conversation this evening. So I say to you, my brother, that I'm here to be supportive. We have had our conversations, and will continue to have our conversations beyond that. I want to thank you, Alderman Wilson, because you actually stated some points that I wanted to bring up, and because we've had so many comments from our public, I think it is worth restating. I also received a couple of phone calls just walking into this vote, and for the people that took the time to email me and call, I remind you all that our decisions are not made based on what someone said or what we read in the media, but actually what's written on paper. And I think that, Alderman Wilson, you did a very good job stating that, and I continue to ask the question, out of all the speakers, how many people actually read through the packet? It is my honest opinion that this does not take away any power from the clerk, as I've read through it three times. I think it really just seeks to clarify who is doing the work in the various departments. I think it's clear that the clerk will remain the gatekeeper in his role of customer-facing, accepting the FOIAs, and working with the internal staff to get the information to our public. I appreciate the mayor's statistics on over the 1,400 and numbers still growing within the request that we've only had a handful of complaints, of which, Clerk Reed, that if someone is not satisfied, you would be the person to walk them through the process to appeal. That doesn't change at all. And so, it's unfortunate that, within this discussion, that a lot of the information that folks have discussed has absolutely nothing to do with this decision. In fact, it is not in the packet that I read, so I don't want to waste any time speaking to that. But I am going to support it. I think that the positions create greater transparency for the public to know that these are the people over the years that have been doing the work, and you probably don't even know it, and now it's crystal clear. And if you have any questions or concerns, he's still the person that you would appeal to. There is no action within this memo that I've read that diminishes his role. And so, I respect the fact that we can come and have this dialogue, and I think that's where we'll move. I'll stop talking. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah. Just real quick, you guys, excuse me, I'm very tired for some reason tonight. So here's... So here's, I just would say my concern, and I voiced this, I think, to Alderman Wilson before. So we live in a time where people don't trust government, whether that's because of us, the president, you know, whoever, right? We just live in that time, unfortunately, and I think that we have to be cognizant of that. Now, that shouldn't paralyze us from doing good government and understanding, no matter, almost particularly in Evanston, no matter what you choose, someone doesn't like it, and we have to deal with that all the time. And I tell people all the time, if you don't like what I chose or someone else chose, then run for office and make different decisions. That's really what it comes down to. In this situation, I think my concern is that, given that, again, we live in a place where people have a lot of questions about trust, they, whether they're totally accurate or perception, really see the clerk's office as their office of accountability for us. For me, that's fine. I don't, you know, I don't think there's anything I say or do or send via email that I wouldn't say to people's face. But I do think it's key that we balance that in terms of what we, you know, understand our motive to be or believe our motive to be versus what people perceive. And although you can't live in a world of false perception, I do think that people's experience with any of us or people's experience with the city as a whole, whether it's new experience or old experience, has gotten us to the place where people don't necessarily trust us, and I think we have to be honest about that, whether we agree with it or not. So I, you know, I have not heard, since we first got in office and there was an error, and I think I've made errors since we've been in office as well, I have not personally heard of citizens telling me that they are getting slow FOIA requests reprocessed. I have not heard anyone tell me that, you know, information, personal information about them is being given to other people in the community. I would not want either those things to happen. I am not a FOIA expert, but from people I have spoken to and who share with me, it seems to be working. And so, given the amount of work that we have to do as a council, given the turmoil, you know, in our city, if it's working and these people are already doing the work and they are not FOIA officers, I guess I'm concerned about what approving that says to our citizen base. I think if Clerk Reed needs help, it was my understanding that the deputy city clerk in the past has operated as a FOIA officer. I don't need to necessarily debate that, but we have a deputy city clerk. And so, I think, you know, particularly with the police stuff and the law stuff, people do see those as non-independent bodies. I think people's belief would be that if I told, you know, Chief Cook not to release something, he wouldn't release it. Now, I wouldn't tell him that, and people who believe that don't clearly know our chief because he probably wouldn't follow that anyway. But I think it is very important that we keep things as they are if they are working, which, again, they seem to be. I spent a little time on Next Request today. I saw that there were a couple of things that were late. I don't know exactly what they were, but again, I'm making the assumption that it has not come to the point where our citizen base is up in arms about it. What I seem to hear people saying is that they're not getting enough information. And so, clearly, the clerk is not, in my opinion, breaking the rules because he's not giving out stuff he shouldn't be. People want him to give out everything, and clearly, I guess maybe the law department, you know, is redacting what they should, and the clerk is keeping that information redacted. I guess my other concern is that while the clerk has a lawsuit, not that I am a judge or know what the outcome of that is going to be, I think it's probably best to keep some peace and to let the judge tell us what needs to happen with that issue and then have a discussion about the appointment of additional FOIA officers if that's what we see needed. So, those are my thoughts on the issue.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Fleming. All right. Seeing no more lights, Clerk Reed.
I want to be able to respond to some of the issues that were raised. As I put forth in my statements, this does remove authority and responsibility from the office. With the three examples, and there are more than those three that I gave, the reason that, you know, those folks haven't filed PAC opinions and the reason we have such a low number of PAC opinions, given the volume of our FOIA requests, is because people have trust in the system as it is today. People know that when they come to the clerk's office, they have someone who will advocate to ensure that they receive all records that they have a right to receive. If additional FOIA officers are named, the authority that is taken away is, for example, with the 30 sales tax producers that someone FOIA'd, the collector's office issued a blanket denial in the Next Request system. As the FOIA officer, I am the only person or my designee are the only folks who close FOIA requests. So that meant that before that FOIA request was closed, before that requestor even knew that there was a potential denial, we were able to step in, call the Attorney General's office, call the Illinois Department of Revenue, check into the reciprocal sales tax agreement between the city of Evanston and the state of Illinois, and determine that that information could be released. That is why we don't have a large volume of PAC opinions. We have multiple FOIA officers. As I said, myself and the deputy clerk, our FOIA officers and seasonal staff within the office are able to respond and assist when needed. I still have yet to hear any concrete evidence that demonstrates that there is an issue with compliance with the state statute. Yes, there are 1,400 FOIA requests, and yes, the number has doubled since 2016, but we have the Next Request system. It's a software meant to make processing FOIA requests easier and more efficient. So if someone can give facts and data and figures to demonstrate that there is a problem with the fulfillment of requests within a timely manner, then this would be a logical vote. And if anyone can demonstrate how naming additional FOIA officers would solve that problem, this would be a valid discussion and potentially a valid vote. But no one can produce any facts or figures other than the fact that the FOIA requests have increased to 1,400. That doesn't mean that there's a problem. That doesn't mean that we can't handle the volume of requests. We no longer handle passports in the office, we no longer handle real estate transfer stamps, we have the capacity to handle Freedom of Information Act requests. So please, someone demonstrate facts and figures of how we are falling behind on FOIA and how naming additional FOIA officers will solve that problem.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Reed. Seeing no more lights, I'm going to ask Clerk Reed, okay. Alderman, Ruth Simmons.
Can someone in support of this vote respond to his question?
I think that myself and Alderman Braithwaite essentially did. You know, we, this is, in one aspect, it's codifying the way the practice currently, something that didn't get to, you know, for example, there are other things that could come up. I was not aware, I don't know who these seasonal people are, but they're not designated officers. We didn't do a resolution to designate seasonal people as the FOIA officers, but, for example, if the clerk were on vacation or he was ill, there would not be a person who's authorized by the council to take the action. So those are just examples. I don't really want to, like, put all of it in that, but this seems to me to be a best business practice, and I think that it is more transparent, so.
So, question him. Is it okay now for me?
You can go ahead.
The, so in the event that that does happen, he's unavailable, by default, there is not a designated person. Who would that be currently? We just would be unable to close out a FOIA request if he was unavailable?
I suppose.
I mean, but what's the answer?
The answer should be that we should have more than one person assigned to that. Or let's say he decided to resign or move to Australia.
Specifically, the question is if he is not, today, right now, based on our current policy, if he is unavailable for whatever reason, he takes extended vacation, he resigns, what would be the process? Who defaults into being able to close out a FOIA request?
I thought that, under the FOIA rule that exists right now, he could then appoint somebody as a designee or whatever if he was absent. What are you speaking of?
Yeah, I can answer that. So, under the current policy, Resolution 87R17 said that the city clerk is the ex officio FOIA officer for the city of Evanston, and that I am able to name designees. So I could name the law department as a designee if I so choose. Currently, the designee is the deputy clerk because he works within the office, and the resolution gave me the authority to name any designee to step in in my absence. So if I were to resign or if I were to pass out from a heart attack, immediately the deputy clerk would become the lead FOIA officer, as he would become the new city clerk, and anyone that the deputy clerk designated would then be the FOIA officer. So we have more than one FOIA officer. There isn't a capacity issue, and I question what this problem seeks to.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. And I want you to know, no one wants you to have a heart attack, but if you do, 20% of the people in this room know CPR. Including the chief right there that walked in. All right. Alderman Ruth Simmons, did you have anything else?
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back when we were considering this before and we were talking about whether there was a need for additional FOIA officers, I was the one who advocated for additional FOIA officers because we've certainly done that in the past, but I think, you know, considering the tasks that are before us, that it's incumbent on us to make sure things are done as efficiently and expeditiously as possible, and I felt that that necessitated the appointment of other FOIA officers. But I have a question for our Corporation Council. Can you just tell us about the cases that are open?
So Michelle Mason Cup, Corporation Council, I just pulled up the Next Request system, and two different facts. There are 19 requests that are overdue, four of which are attorney-client privileged communication. The clerk refuses to close those requests and demands production. Three are body camera videos. Five are where the city has uploaded the documents and they are ready to be released, and the remainder, it's unclear. There are 67 requests which are in a holding pattern. It's called pending in the Next Request system. And just based on the first page, 22 of the 25 requests that are in this holding pattern have been in holding since at least May 7th, so three weeks ago, and they're all relating to email communication. The city staff conducted the IT search, so they put in a message into IT, into an external message to the requestor which indicates how many search results came back. I just done a brief research during the meeting, I was looking at all of them, and they range from 800 to 100,000 emails. Please narrow their request, and this is provided under the statute. Then the requestor would narrow their request so that the city staff could review the emails to see if there's anything that needs to be redacted, and then they would produce the request and close it out. Because it's in this holding pattern, city can't comply with FOIA right now because they have now been overdue. The earliest one is from April 30th of, and this should have been closed out several weeks ago because they were never narrowed. Under the previous FOIA system, we used to give five business days for an opportunity for the requestor to narrow their request, and then if they never narrowed it, it would be closed. Now there are still 67 requests that are still pending.
Mayors. Did you have anything else, Alderman Fisk? Okay. Alderman Reed, yeah, go ahead.
Alderman Reed, soon enough.
Clerk Reed.
So, one, I ask, why were these figures not put forth in the memo if they helped make the case? Two, the pending request is reliant, if a requestor makes a request and they refuse to narrow their request or they don't know how to narrow their request, that isn't a capacity issue, that is just an issue on whether or not the requestor is willing to narrow the request, and we leave it pending. So pending request is not an issue. As far as the open, the 18 or 19 open and overdue FOIA request, they are overdue and I left them open because the city is not complying with the FOIA statute. It is the reason that I filed a lawsuit for declarative action. The FOIA statute very clearly says that a copy of all responsive records are to be deposited and kept in a log by the FOIA officer. If the police department or any other department refuses to turn over responsive records and allow my ability to, and impinges upon my statutory responsibilities, then I will leave that request open and wait until they follow the law and provide a copy of responsive records. Of the overdue requests, there are, most of them overdue, and the person has received their records or the records that the, well, again, if you're going to disagree, this should have been put in the memo, and so I should, we should have the alderman hold this because new information is being presented, and it's very important for a public discussion of these facts and to have it put into a memo. So I ask for an alderman to make a motion to table this issue to a date certain so those facts, and we can have a full examination of all of the things that you're bringing forward, but don't put forward this idea on Memorial Day weekend and then come in here at the last minute and pull an alley-oop move to try to discredit what's going on with FOIA. Put these statistics in a memo and let's discuss it publicly. Please, someone table this motion.
For the record, right, I didn't put that in the memo because that wasn't necessary for me to think that we needed three additional FOIA officers, but Alderman Fisk.
No.
All right. Seeing no more lights, city clerk, could you please take the roll?
Why did this come up on Friday night?
Could you please take, I'm calling the roll. Could you please take the roll? City clerk, could you please take the roll? City clerk, could you please take the roll?
Take a motion.
Please take the roll.
Take a motion. Hold it.
Excuse me, sir.
You're the city clerk. Your job is to take the roll.
Excuse me.
I've asked for it three times.
And I will take the roll.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Yeah. I don't know who goes first. Before I take the roll, I will say...
You need to take the, you need to take the roll.
Before I take the roll, I will say, anyone who votes on this measure without facts or figures that were put forward, you're not voting in the interest of our residents, you're not voting in the interest of transparency, you're voting on a personal dislike or the inability to control an independently elected office, and you should be ashamed of yourself.
Alderman Wilson. All right. Take the roll, please. Don Wilson.
Aye. Wait, point of order, point of order. I totally, totally disregarding Clerk Reed's last comment because my concerns have nothing to do with disliking any member of this council.
Then put forward facts.
But I would like, just be quiet, but what I would like to know is a little more specifics about what information Clerk Reed is saying that we don't have. I'm not clear on that.
I'm happy to answer that question. Point of order, just so I understand. I called the roll.
I've got a point of order. I've got a point of order. I think, I think we should at least understand, I'm very supportive of the additional FOIA officers, but, and I'm going to vote for it if we do hold this over, but I do want to know, what is the information, I keep hearing, that we don't have about the backlog of FOIA requests? And I, I don't understand, and maybe the only person is either our law department, our attorney Mason Cup, or Clerk Reed can tell us what that backlog is.
Yeah, I would love to provide if you give me...
Wait, 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 I want the mayor to control this.
Well, I thought, I thought we had called the vote. I thought we called the vote and we had to stick to calling the vote.
You have the privilege of getting this one bit of information because I'm supportive...
So Alderman Rainey, the information that Alderman Fisk had asked of the city attorney just to go through some of the details of some items, I guess, that were held up or pending or in suspense, is what we just all heard right here. I don't know of anything else.
It wasn't really clear to me. It wasn't, because that's the first time I've heard all that.
You're asking what the clerk has said and we're not, we're not...
All right.
Yes, and what she said.
I've got to take the vote. The vote was called, we're going to take the vote. Please take the vote, or call the, start with Alderman Wilson. Let's see where this goes.
I'm going to vote no then.
He started to vote.
So the vote was aye.
He was aye.
I'm voting no.
He's calling the roll.
Alderman. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
No.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
I'm voting no because I'm being denied information.
Thank you.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman, when?
Shame on you.
All right. So, the vote for SP1, approving designation of additional Freedom of Information Act officers passes the city council on a five... Shame on this council! Shame on all of you! Order, order in the chambers. Oh, I never use this. Order in, order in the chambers. Passes five to three.
Five aye.
Passes five to... Passes five to three. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Alderman Rue Simmons, Alderman Rue Simmons, could you please take us through the consent agenda?
M1, for action, approval of minutes of regular city council meeting of May 13, 2019. APW, A1, for action, payroll April 29, 2019, through May 12, 2019, in the amount of $2,708,964.68. A2 is for action, bills list, May 29, 2019, in the amount of $4,115,497.64. A3, contract award for Cully Contracting LLC for the 2019 structure lining bid is for action. A4, contract award for JA Johnson Paving Company for the 2019 motor fuel tax street resurfacing project. A5, contract extension for corrective asphalt materials for Reclamite pavement ceiling. A6, contract award with W Construction Inc. for Fleetwood Jordan interior renovation. A7, contract bid award with Hacienda Landscaping Incorporated for the garden park and playground renovation. A8, purchase of Robert Crown Community Center ice complex and library general purpose furniture from Forward Space. A9, purchase of Robert Crown Community Center ice complex and library preschool furniture from Forward Space. A10, contract award with Blessing Hancock for the Robert Crown Community Center ice complex and library public art. A11, sole source agreement with LCast lighting for street fixture repairs. A12, approval of Great Merchant Grant Program financial assistance to the Noys and West Village Business Districts. A13, approval of funding for 12-month period for Chicago's North Shore Convention and Visitors A14, Resolution 55 R19, authorizing city manager to apply for Highway Safety Improvement Program grant funds. A15, Resolution 54 R19, appointing a director and alternate director to the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County. A16, Ordinance 37019, authorizing the city manager to execute a sale contract for city-owned real property located at 1824 Emerson Street. A17, Ordinance 48019, amending the city code to establish a four-way stop control at the intersection of Brown Avenue and Noys Street. A18, Ordin, oh.
You're taking A17 or 18?
18.
18's off.
Okay. Removing 18. A19, Ordinance 53019, amending city code to modify the no parking restriction on Howard Street from Chicago Avenue to Ridge Avenue. Human Services Committee, Resolution 52 R19, authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute a grant agreement with the Evanston Animal Shelter.
Alderman Simmons, do you mind removing 01 and 02?
Yes, removing 01 and 02, and that's all we have for consent.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Seeing the city clerk isn't here, Ms. Richardson, could you take the roll on the consent agenda? Starting with Wilson.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Do you have his mic speak into this, so we can record it?
Sorry. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Revell.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
All right. The consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to zero vote. I was remiss earlier, too. I normally do this. We are missing one alderman tonight. Alderman suffered, and he is in Springfield for work and couldn't be here tonight. So now we're going to go to the items that were taken off. Alderman Rue Simmons, if you'd get to us to A18.
Yes. A18, ordinance, staff recommend city council adoption of ordinance 42019, authorizing the city manager to enter into a real estate contract with Clark Street Real Estate LLC for the sale of city-owned property located at 2222 Oak Street. A two-thirds majority of city council is required to adopt the ordinances for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. This is open for discussion. Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I've stated numerous reasons over the last few months as to why I don't think this property should be sold. I had several emails, one very thoughtful email about why I should approve this, and I've made it clear that I really don't have a problem with the climbing wall. That's, the tenant seems like a very nice person, nice organization, and I've been to the climbing walls and other locations. But I don't think the property should be sold. And one of the reasons, among many, is that the sale to this real estate developer, who is the buyer of the property, the climbing wall is simply the tenant. And I don't have a problem with the tenant. I have a problem selling city property to a big developer. That bothers me, especially when the property that we're selling is this, is the recycling center, which is on top of the community gardens, which is part of James Park, our most valuable park in the city of Evanston. However, however, there's more to it. This use generates no revenue at all, other than the real estate tax. It is true that this property has never generated real estate property tax. So that's a big plus, except when you think that all the city of Evanston, I love the schools, my kids graduated from these schools, I graduated from Evanston Township High School back when we just were getting electricity, but I still graduated from Evanston High And it's important that the schools get our tax dollars, but I'm really interested in what Evanston gets out of the sale of this property. And for that reason, I don't want Evanston to sell this property. Clark Real Estate Developer has told us, and they're pretty accurate on this, that we are going to get, and I want my colleagues to listen to me, okay? I know you're bored about this, but we're going to get, the real estate tax is probably going to be around 100,000. Gordon Foods is paying, let me tell you what Gordon Foods is paying. Gordon Foods is paying this half year 66,000. They're a little more, their land, a little more than, than, the recycling center's about 41,000 square feet. They're paying, they're paying 120,000 a year, Gordon Foods is. The Shell gas station is paying close to 100,000 a year, okay? Actually, they might, they went up a little, they got an increase. So they're going to, they're going to be paying about 110,000 this year. So I think, I think Clark is giving us exactly. What's our percentage of that real estate tax? About 16%, right? 17%? Let's say 16%. So we're going to be getting 16,000 a year. I've been talking to Laura and Dave Stoneback, they've been looking for a storage facility. We, we really need 30,000 square feet of storage. They've been looking all over, they haven't gotten, they haven't been able to secure site. We don't need 30,000 under one roof. Please listen to me. They don't, we don't need it. We can get 20,000 here, 15,000, 10,000, doesn't have to be under one roof. We're not finding it in Evanston. I think we'd be, shame on us if we rented in Skokie, because they're not paying their water bill. But they found some stuff in Lincolnwood, and the prices, we're getting good prices, five and six dollars a square foot. 30,000 square feet at five and six dollars a square foot is 150 and 180,000 dollars a year. We're going to be in the hole, everybody, we're going to be in the hole, 134,000 to 164,000 a year, based on the real estate tax we're going to get from the sale of the recycling center. I say, this is a bad deal. So.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
You know what? I'm not really finished.
I thought you paused, and sounded like you were done.
I was catching my breath. I, I think, I think we ought to give this some thought. It's, I've tolerated Don Wilson telling me, you know, that, that building at 621 Howard Street that you wanted us to loan, you want us to loan money on? It's a terrible deal, and I hope you succeed, but I think it's going to fail. And today it's called pickish pig, you know? I, I thought, okay, that's a risk I'm taking down there, but trust me, Don, and I, I hope I do succeed, I hope they succeed, and everything's going to be fine. And he's always said that was good, good work. I am telling you, Don, this is a big mistake. It's a big mistake. It's a big mistake. So, I don't know how, how you can explain to me that something we're going to be getting 16,000 dollars a year on, we're not getting one, if we get, if we get 5,000 to 10,000 a year in sales tax, out of energy bars and, you know, juice boxes, from the, from, from the climbing wall people, from First Descent, I'll be surprised. It just doesn't, we're just not going to do that. So six, and I'm glad for the schools, that they're going to be getting, they're going to be getting the 84,000, you know? Don't forget Cook County, et cetera. But I don't see how a loss of 34,000, and 134,000, 164,000 for rent we're going to be paying to somebody in Lincolnwood is, is going to be really helpful to us. It doesn't make sense. If you want to hold this over so that you can explain it to me, I know you remind me all the time, you're an attorney, and a real estate attorney, and you probably know more than I do, maybe you can help me out. But taxpayers of the city of Evanston, city's going to get screwed on this one.
Thank you, Alderman.
You're welcome. I am finished now.
Thank you. I was in support of this, but I would like to ask that we hold it. I would like to consider more of Alderman Rainey's points. She's been very effective in what she's been able to accomplish for development in the Eighth Ward, and I would like to take some time to consider other options.
Okay. Thank you. So if we have a, I just want to make sure procedure, what's that? We just need a second, which I think Alderman Rainey would second. Oh, okay. Alderman Revell seconds it. Okay. So, that item, which is A18, ordinance 42-0-19, authorization to enter into real estate contract with sale of city-owned property at 2222 Oak Street to Clark Street Real Estate will be held to the 6/10, to the June 10th meeting. Okay? Alderman Fleming.
I just have a quick question for whenever it comes back. Can, can we have, I would like to have information, I guess, from Dave Stoneback, in terms of, I only see a couple buses parked out there, granted, I've never been in, but I would like to know what's in there that we need to have so much storage? If we don't have somewhere else we can put it around the city, we have, you know, again, I don't know what's in there. So I'd like more information to know, I'm not one for public storage, or holding on to stuff, so I'd like a better idea of what's in there that we need to store that maybe we can't liquidate.
Okay. Well, city, deputy city manager, if you can just make sure we get that at the 10th as well. The item's been handled, so I can't take any, any comments now, because we're going to, we're holding it.
Well, I just, my name's Andy Stein with Clark Street Real Estate. I just would like to understand specifically, based off of Alderman Rainey's comments, what is it being held for as far as the alternative for how the city should handle the utilization of what's there? I just want to have a very clear understanding of what, and so staff has clear understanding of what the mission is for it to be held.
Sure. Sure. So it's being, it's being held because colleagues up here want to have some more consideration before they literally sell the property to Clark, to Clark Street, that they want to feel comfortable that that's the right decision, as opposed to potentially continuing to retain the property, lease it out, whatever the other alternatives would be.
Okay. Even though you put it out for RFP?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Alderman Rue Simmons, could you take us to 01?
The Human Services Committee and Staff recommend city council adoption of Resolution 52 R19, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with the Evanston Animal Shelter Association to fund operations by providing $100,000 grant and supply reimbursement for the period of June 1, 2019, through May 31, 2019. Funding will be provided by the city's animal control budget, with a budget of 100,000, all of which is remainings for action.
Is there a second? Okay. This is open for conversation. Alderman Braithwaite.
It was just more a comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, and thank you, Vicki, and your volunteers who stayed so late. I shared these comments at our, seriously, and so I shared this, my comments at the last human service meeting, and I think it's worth repeating again, just the tremendous job that your group of volunteers have done on behalf of the animals that are, that are abandoned in our town. And if you recall, the meeting that we were in years ago was probably more contentious than the meeting that we just had a moment ago.
Never.
And, and it's, and it's not an understatement. And so for your group to be able to kind of survive that very messy divorce, and, and serve the town the way you do, it's just worth mentioning. So I just want to say, you know, thank you very much. Kimberly, you know, when I looked at their budget side by side, I think it's, it's worth examining, and a great model that we should use moving forward to examine our public-private relationships, and with, with all of our nonprofits, because you clearly are doing the good work. You clearly have laid out a budget document that shows how you're raising your money, and how those funds are applied. So I can't say thank you enough, and I'm sure I speak for all the members of council. Congratulations on this contract, and we look forward to continuing to work with you here in the city of Evanston. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Well, you know, no, thanks for, thanks for staying. And Alderman Braithwaite, thank you for those, those good words, and I absolutely agree with you. I mean, you've done a great job in serving as the council lays on to the committee, and that's, I think, been really helpful to everyone, and they're all nodding their heads, so they appreciate that, too. But I guess the point I wanted to stress tonight was something that Vicki said up at the microphone, and that was the, the social services that you provide. I mean, this is, this is not, and anyone who's ever owned an animal knows, knows that it's not about the animal, it's about us and the animal, it's about everyone and the animal, and especially people who are in a very, very difficult point in their lives, how reassuring it is for you to step in and be, and be a source of help, and a source of reassurance. It's, it's really incredibly important. So I, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I'll come over and see you guys soon. But thanks very much for the presentation, it was just perfect, appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Revell.
I just want to say, as someone who missed the earlier council discussion when all of this took place, as someone who is relatively unfamiliar with all the wonderful programs that you provide, I found the packet that you, of information you provide, really powerful and really very helpful. and really very helpful for me to better understand all the great work that you're doing and congratulations.
Don't you wanna adopt a pet?
Okay. So seeing no more, no more lights, can we go ahead and take the, take the role, please, on O-1, Resolution 52-R-19, authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute a grant agreement with the Evanston Animal Shelter Association. Deputy city manager, could you take the role, please?
Definitely. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Great. O-1, Resolution 52-R-19, passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to zero vote. Alderman Ruth Simmons, could you take us to O-2?
Yes. O-2. The Alternatives to Arrest Committee recommends city council adoption of Resolution 68-R-18 in support of employing administrative adjudication as an alternative to a criminal justice system for juveniles in ordinance 159-018, amending portions of the city code incorporating restorative justice practices for minors. This is for action.
Second. Okay. Alderman Wilson.
So I want to thank Alderman Braithwaite and the team that was in detail identified earlier in the evening by Mr. Ginn and Devlin. This is great ongoing work and it's important work and I think this is going to really, all of these things put together are gonna make a substantial difference in the way that, that young people in Evanston are afforded opportunities to go forward in their lives. So thank you for that great work.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanna start by thanking Mr. Mayor for seeing the value of appointing this committee.
Absolutely.
Two years of tough labor and Alderman Wilson, I also wanna acknowledge the work that you've done just on the expungement policy, codifying our city code and ordinances to bring them up to date with where we are with the state. Alderman Fleming and Revelle, who have been present at all of our early eight morning meetings, just wanna acknowledge you. I made a mistake at our last human services meeting. Patrick, who is still here in the, in the audience and, and so much of this work was on the shoulders of the Moran Center and, and bringing your vision to the table will have an impact for generations and generations in the life of black and brown children. So I just wanna really say thank you to you for your dedication, not only for this committee, but also the valuable work that you're doing here in the city of Evanston. And I don't know if it's too early to say, but welcoming you to your new location over in the second ward in the shopping center, which I think is gonna provide even greater access for the kids because of the ability to, to, to get there in close proximity to high school. So thank you very much. To Chief Cook, who stepped in to pull us across the line and, and all the other staff that were named earlier, the work is really just beginning, like this was just the first step. And so really, I'm looking forward to working with the chief to add additional ordinances that we will be able to divert to our administrative adjudication. And it's important to understand, and I think Patrick said, this doesn't work if our Evanston Police Department don't see value. And your officers that you were a part of the team and you now lead have been very instrumental, along with the many community members that participated in moving this forward. So if you could please give them our, on behalf of our city council and the mayor, thank you to them for all of their participation, hard work on this, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And I appreciate all of the great work of everybody, everybody on the committee. I know that's something everybody up here is very proud of. All right. We had a introduction and a second for O-2, Resolution 68-R-18, in support of employing administrative adjudication as an alternative to the criminal justice system for juveniles and ordinance 159-018, amending portions of our city code incorporating restorative justice practices for minors. So deputy city manager, if you could take the role, please?
Yes. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Congratulations. Good work, everybody. Ordinance, Resolution, excuse me, 68-R-18 and ordinance 159-0-18, pass the Evanston City Council on an eight to zero vote. All right. We're now gonna move into call of the wards. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. First, I'd like to send condolences to the Kennedy and the Moody family and the entire Faith Temple community, which is the church which I belong, on the loss of our first lady, Paletta Kennedy Moody. She is an example of grace and service and we all should model after the example that she has given here in community. Next, I would like to just make a statement. On Saturday, we had a couple of shootings in the ward and I woke up to a gunshot on Sunday morning about 6:00 AM. This is not the opening of the summer that is acceptable and I just wanna make a statement that I have asked and demanded that every resource available to us be provided to stop gun crimes, illegal gun crimes and gun activity. It is not okay for families to deal with the trauma of gunshots on a beautiful holiday Saturday. It is not okay. So I'm asking that any residents that have information on any gun crimes at all, that you feel safe and confident to contact the police using Textitip or 311 or 911 to share information so that we can remove the guns off of our street and have safe neighborhoods throughout Evanston. I wanted to give a early, in some cases, congratulations to all of our graduates in the city of Evanston, from kindergarten to those that are receiving their GEDs, those that are receiving their doctorate degrees, any professional licenses. I wanna celebrate all of our graduates and to all of the graduates in the fifth ward, we will have a graduation reception that opens up our ward meeting. So on June 12th at 6:00 PM here in the civic center in room G300, we will celebrate you and your advancement and your progress with food and some other special treats. So please do join us. Our ward meeting will include a development presentation, which is a proposed development on Maple, fifteen units. Please come and weigh in on that. And finally, sometime ago, I sent, and actually in February, I sent to our Equity and Empowerment Commission some concerns about actually having some change in our wealth and opportunity gap and seeing that the only way to address this would be intentionally with repair. So myself and Alderman Fleming met with the commission sometime ago, I think about a month ago, and started to propose this idea. So I'm making an official referral to the Equity and Empowerment Commission to start the work on a local reparation policy. I'm calling it solutions only. And I'll just read a introduction and I will send this work along to committee for them to work on. I'm asking that anyone that has any opinion on this, it's a public committee, you can come and have public comment. I'd love to have your input. So please do come. Black families have ten cents to every one dollar of white families, less access to education and overall years, less in lifespan. The shameful wealth, opportunity and health gap is a direct result of slavery in America and locally, the discrimination, oppression and exclusion of black residents for generations. The data is complete, the evidence is alive and the impact is not consistent with the values we celebrate in our community. There is no way to repair the inherited and lived trauma of slavery and continued discrimination, but actions to repair the demonstrable damages are necessary. This policy is not a settlement, but a rehabilitative reparation that will focus on empowerment and advancement for individual black residents and the black community historically residing in the west end of the fifth ward. So I'm really grateful that I will have a full-time intern starting in the next month that will help support this work. I know the committee is busy as well as staff. We have a first phone call tomorrow with a regional organization that will help us develop this work. And I have had support from the clerk's office in helping to provide historica data, historica, historical policy and other actions in Evanston that helps defend this work. So I wanna say thank you to the clerk's office and we look forward to continuing to work together with his, with him on this. So I am asking that this go to the committee. I am asking the community to attend those meetings and to weigh in on that. Thank you.
That was, that was a lot, Alderman Ruth Simmons. Very, some really positive when you talk about the graduates that you're gonna be celebrating, but also some really serious information for us about the shootings in your ward and I think you have the whole city's support in, in dealing with that.
Thank you.
I guess I just wanted to follow up on the proclamation that the mayor gave earlier this, this evening and add my, add my congratulations to Canal Shores on its 100th anniversary. It's really a dedicated and hardworking group of board members and volunteers who've put in a tremendous, tremendous amount of effort to restore the fiscal stability of Canal Shores. They developed a wonderful ecological master plan. They've removed vast amounts of buckthorn and other invasive species and planted all kinds of wonderful new native plants. They're reclaiming overgrown areas of the golf course and that, just do a tremendously, a wonderful job of stewarding this community asset. So I'm, hope the whole community can join in and help celebrate their 100th anniversary.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Revelle. Alderman Rainey.
Yes. I want to express my condolences to Elizabeth Brasher's family. Elizabeth is the daughter of Mayor Morton. She died recently and her services will be the end of this week. Also, I wanna remind the Dobson, Barton, Bremel, Ridge and Howard Neighborhood Group to RSVP regarding their presence at the neighborhood meeting next week. And I wanna make a referral regarding the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. In that ordinance, it's very subtle and not really clear, but it does include deconversions. If you are a developer and you're deconverting a condominium to rental housing, you are subject to our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. When you deconvert a condominium, you are creating more rental housing and you are being required to either provide for 10% of your total price of the buyout or I think it's a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar units. And these units, especially in South Evanston, aren't selling for a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And what is happening is, and I feel that I have to explain this because it's so bizarre, they're creating, like, in, in these buildings, twenty-four new units of rental housing that are going to be affordable because they're not gigantic. And the developers are coming in and they're finding out about this because it was not, it was not advertised. And when we voted on this, there was never the word deconversion or anything like that. The word vice versa was in, is in the ordinance and it never occurred to me that vice versa was what we were talking about. Anyway, so they're, they're abandoning the deconversions. And so people who are currently, a lot of people are underwater still on these, on these condos and they were desperate to be deconverted. And so it's, it's really causing a problem. I think we oughta look at the issue. So I'm making a referral. I think it should go to, no, no, no. I want it to come to a standing committee so we can talk about it. PND? PND. So I'm making that referral. And then I wanna congratulate the firefighters who were promoted tonight and I wanna tell you that when Kim Cole was standing in the hallway in, what, what year is it? I don't know, it was like seventeen years ago or something, waiting to go in to be interviewed by the Civil Service Commission, I met her and talked about, and Clerk Reed was speaking about, talking to her about when she first joined the force. She was, her attitude was so fabulous. I told her, don't worry about the interview, everything's gonna be fine. Her attitude was so fabulous, I knew that someday she would be commander in the company. So it's amazing that she is, is still here, she has a family and I was just so proud to see her tonight. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple things. I wanna make a referral to Human Services Committee. I would like some more information about the healthy workplace process. I've gotten some questions answered by the HR department, but I'm, I'm not satisfied. I'd like to make sure we have a process in place that protects us as a corporation as well as our staff who have concerns. And then my other statement was, thank you to those who have reached out regarding the loss of former Alderman Rochelle White Washington, who was my cousin, and if you all know her, she had lots of attitude, which maybe runs in our family, but I will keep you all posted on her services. Thank you to the city manager who was flying the flags at half-staff. I'm not one who necessarily cares about such things, but several of my family were very appreciative of that. So thank you all for that. And my other, oh, then my other statement was, so, so next week, there's a resolution coming forward to hope to hear from all of you all regarding that. And I just wanna applaud Alderman Ruth Simmons for her work and moving forward to some tangible actions that the city can put in place to support families who unfortunately, due to our, you know, racial tensions in our, in our country and Evanston Falls within that, just have not been able to benefit as much as some other families. So I'm looking forward to, looking forward to us as a city really working on that. And then lastly, just also wanted to extend to Alderman Ruth Simmons that as I read about the shootings over the weekend, that I extend to myself and I'm sure others do, I know we have gone over to door knock when there's been a loss of life, but I'm also willing to go over and speak to residents. I think it's important that they understand, even though they're in the fifth ward, they are citizens for all of us and I think it's important, if you feel the need, that we all go over and support and speak to residents, you know, with the officers or on our own, to make sure that they understand that, you know, their, their life and their safety is just as valuable to myself as a ninth ward Alderman, as it is to you. So I wanna make sure that, you know, you have my support and I imagine the support of the rest of us as you need it.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd, I'd be happy to join you, so let me, let me know. I wanna remind everybody that we have a first ward meeting coming up next week on Tuesday at 7:00 PM. We're going to meet in Fountain Square, so keep your fingers crossed that it's warm weather and wear your flip flops. Dave Stonebeck has promised me that he will wear his flip flops and we can all paddle around in the, in the, in the new fountain. But we're gonna talk about the history of the fountain and have some, some presentations for you and maybe some treats. So we're doing this in cooperation with downtown Evanston, so I wanna thank Annie Coakley for that. I'd also like to take just a minute to clarify one of the comments that was made at Citizen Comment tonight regarding the question about R6 zoning that's coming up with the Plan Commission tomorrow night. Wanted to clarify to all of you that this is a follow-up on the reference that I made at council when we were talking about the library parking lot, but it became very clear to
we were talking about the library parking lot. But it became very clear to me throughout that process that there was some confusion between R6 zoning and D3 zoning and that on that particular block, there were some uses in R6 zoning that actually weren't R6 uses and were not consistent with R6, that were more consistent with D3. I struggled with what's the best way to handle this. I looked at the rest of the downtown and I saw this not only as a situation that exists in some other places in downtown, but also an opportunity for us to clarify some of our zoning questions downtown. So, I'm, I'm starting with this because I think it's, you know, based on, on some of the issues that were raised, including the office building behind the WCTU that in order for them to use, they can't use it under R6, R6 zoning as R6 zoning currently stands. So, if we, if we make a text amendment to R6 zoning, then they will be, that will be illegal use. So, it's complicated, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So, before anyone reads in any, you know, nefarious motivations here, it really is to bring some clarity to the question of downtown zoning. Now, the benefit that I see to that personally as first ward Alderman is I see it as an opportunity to look at some places in the downtown where we can have perhaps moderately sized office buildings. Office uses are a special use in R6 zoning, but they have very strange restrictions on them. And, and it's, I'm not sure that that fits in well with what we're doing now. It's more of a 1993 decision that was made on the basis of what was there without much thought to it. And now, I think that we're inviting in some development. I would love to see more moderately sized opportunities for office development in the downtown. So, the folks that are upset about this, no one has called me about it. So, I'm a little bit surprised. But it will be at the Plan Commission tomorrow night. I just wanted all of you to understand what the reason is for it. And we'll see, we'll see where it goes. I'll have a little bit more to say finally when it comes to council. But just wanted to, again, clarify some of that for you tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Bathway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think these names were called out again. But on my behalf, just Alderman White Washington, her family, Elizabeth Brasher, and also Mother Moody, condolences and prayers going out to you and your family. I just wanted to take this moment to reflect a little bit on our last Crown meeting. And I, I did ask for the meeting and the reason why was developed by a few people who came to our ward meeting. And what I had hoped to accomplish and hopefully those that supported the notion was just providing a little bit of clarity around the financing and, and operations of, of the Robert Crown facility. That's going to be a huge investment for our town. And I do support, I do support the project. One of the things I was concerned going into the meeting was the difference in, in format. And, and when I said I had an opportunity to reflect, I actually, I thought it was a good idea after being there because a lot of the questions that we, that I have heard, that I have received are based on what people say and what they have heard. And I recall responding to a number of emails showing people where they can read the information and no one's seemed to be interested in that. And so, it was unfortunate, just the lack of civility, even when we disagree, I think it's just a part of our, it should be a part of our democracy to maintain respect. And I don't know, I've often theorized with people who will listen when we get into these debates that a lot of the anxiety and anger that we're seeing now is, is a direct, a direct relationship to who is currently in office. And I've als, I've always maintained that in the city of Evanston, that we're better than that. Not insulated in any way, but we're much better than that in how we agree and disagree on issues. And, you know, one of the things that came out of it that I, I just want to share was that there was accusation of disrespect to Ms. Madeline Decree. And I just want to take an opportunity to apologize that she and anyone who observed that meeting walked away feeling not heard, particularly Ms. Decree is someone who I've known over many years and have a deep respect for. And for anybody that will play back this tape, I want to offer two things. That the meeting itself got off to a very rocky start because of a lot of the commotion being caused by the, the residents who attended. The goal was to take in questions and, and I can't remember because I wasn't here in the beginning of where, where we kind of like fell off the rails. But what ended up happening is at some point during the meeting, we paused the video just because it wasn't working. And we opened it up to questions for, for people to answer, for the folks who actually took the time to put those questions into the basket. And as I stood there with the city manager, it's so difficult to maintain any type of order in a meeting where everyone is like yelling at the same time. Very, very difficult. I would invite anyone to try it. And so, what we attempted to do was to go through the questions that were submitted. And then, there was a group of questions that were listed on the paper, seven questions. And so, we went through that first round. We finished watching the video. And then, there was a group of people sitting in the front row that demanded over and over again that we go back to the list of questions that were typed up that I'm going to assume was a collective group. It was during that time, as we were wrapping up the meeting, I have to be honest, it, I, I think Ms. Decree was in the back of the meeting and we were going through the list of questions based on the amount of time. For those of you that was there, her son, Mr. Gibbs, was also asking questions on the front end of the meeting. And if Mr. Gibbs was present in the break, I had an opportunity to have a direct conversation with him and again, show him where the information was that he, that he was requesting. So, all of that to say is, I want to apologize to Ms. Decree. I also want to apologize to the folks that were there who were there actually to learn, who were there to learn and understand some of the details that were missed in over two years of meetings. And I can't count how many hours of conversation that we've had leading into where we are now. So, I just want to thank the staff that were there from all of our departments, Parks and Recs, Legal, all those that took the time to answer those questions in the video. I also want to thank and acknowledge the Friends of Robert Crown who are doing an amazing job. I don't think we can say it enough on raising funds. And, and keep in mind, this raising funds in a private way is nothing new. We do that for the Levy Center. They have their foundation and donors. Parks and Recs, they have a foundation that assists with parks. So, my thank you to, and the library, and the library, and the library, and on and on and on and on. So, as we move forward, and I keep in mind for the public who's paying attention, Robert Crown is just one of 50 assets that we have to maintain. Fleetwood Jordane, I mean, I can go down the list. We've talked about some of those just even tonight. And I just hope for those that take the time to donate, that you continue to donate. We rely so much on the private dollars, just as we've seen this evening with the animal welfare and the wonderful work that Kim Lee Richardson is doing with our non-for-profit community. And it's so important that we continue to thank and acknowledge those people so that their dollars and their gifts don't get drowned out with the anger that we're seeing from our, from our community. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Bathway. Alderman Nguyen.
I'll just say to all of my colleagues, well, very well said and no report.
Alderman Wilson.
I have a motion. First, I'm going to thank the handful of people who stayed and listened to us and watched us conduct our business. And to, I believe we have our League of Women Voters representative as well. It's important for people to see what we do. So, I'm grateful for that. Now, pursuant to Illinois compiled, I'm sorry.
Well, I had a statement. I just want to, I don't, don't normally, and then I go to executive, I go to executive session. I just wanted, playing off that point, this council, every council makes lots of decisions. People have heated, heated conversations about issues around this city. Today, we had one. And I just want to thank everybody that is up at this dais for your professionalism. Despite, you know, how votes go, people stay up here and they do their job. And I appreciate that. Alderman Wilson, can you please lead us into executive session?
Thank you. Yes. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding, it's my understanding, Corporation Council, we just have personnel? Just personnel? Okay. Personnel, this agenda item is impermitted, subject to be considered in executive session and is a, is an enumerated exception under the Open Meetings Act. The exception is five ILCS 120/2A C1.
Second.
City, yeah, city, Deputy City Manager, could you call the roll, please?
Sorry about that. Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Ravell?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
All right. The meeting is recessed into executive session on an eight to zero vote. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and talking about the issues of the day.